Aloha, welcome to the Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board. My name is Malia Augustin. I serve as the Chair for the Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-Six. I'm calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven P M. We're meeting in person here at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually via WebEx. At the Neighborhood Board meeting is a monthly forum between government representatives, elected officials, and members of the community. Members of the public have the right to submit testimony on any and all agenda items. If you have any questions or you'd like to speak, rules of speaking, if anyone would like to speak, I'll ask that in-person attendees light up at the microphone. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes. Official monthly reports under three minutes and presenters under ten minutes. Sergeant at Arms will be keeping time, so please end your comments when the timer goes off. So we have a new timer from our N C L. So when the timer goes off, please end your comments. So thank you, everyone, for coming and engaging with us. We want this to be a space with community openness and the spirit of aloha. So tonight, if we can open up with Pule, if I can ask Board Member Tector to open us with a Pule?
Sure. Dear Lord, thank you for this time. We thank you for everyone that made it, be it those that's on their way. May we have a pleasant meeting and all that needs to be said and shared, that it will be taken with a grain of salt. Thank you for your many blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So first on our agenda, we have City Emergency and First Responders Monthly Reports with Honolulu Fire Department here in person.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Alysis. I'm a firefighter-three at the Nanakuli Fire Station. These are the statistics for the month of July, two thousand and twenty-five. We had two structure fires, four wildan or brush fires, twenty-five nuisance fires. As far as medical emergencies, we had a hundred and two. We had six motor vehicle collisions and two mountain rescues. This month's safety tip goes over emergency notifications and resources. Understanding how you'll be alerted during urgent emergencies and knowing where to find accurate official information is a key part of being prepared. There's a website here, learnmore@honolulu.gov/dem/stay-inform. There are opt-in alerts. These notify individuals who have signed up to receive alerts via text, email, or app push notifications based on user preferences. Alerts are not sent based on location. Systems include H and L Alert and official government social media. Sign up at hnlalert.gov to receive notifications. And alerts may be shared by official city, state, and trusted partner accounts. There's also a public alert and warning systems. These systems deliver urgent lifesaving information during immediate threats to public safety. In Hawaii, this includes the E A S, which is the Emergency Alert System, the W E A, the Wireless Emergency Alerts, and also our outdoor warning signs depending on the emergency. One or more of these systems may be activated. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the community for Honolulu Fire Department? Any questions from the Board? Board Member Myers? Board Member Dela Cruz?
Aloha. Last month, H F D didn't come, so I'm asking you this month. The fires in Mailei that had burned, it's in our district, Neighborhood Board District. Did you get a, is there an investigation, completion of an investigation report? How it got started, where it got started?
Are you talking about the Ahuna family?
Yes.
I think that investigation is still open, but I can follow up for you guys.
Okay. If you can, even if it's not available by next month, if you can just, once the report comes out, can you let us know? So it's not about condemning, it's about getting, to get feedback in order for us to learn lessons from it, in order to improve the situation. So we understand that there wasn't sufficient fire hydrants, but like, how can we take that report to actually advocate for fire hydrants, et cetera? Even though we know it's on private land, but how do we can work with our legislators to, because it affects, it can jump into a community that is not private land, et cetera?
Correct. Okay. Now, I'll follow up with you guys.
Thank you.
Try to get those answers by next month.
Awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
Board Member Dela Cruz?
Aloha. My question is, the fire that's going on now over the ridge at Kuniya, how big is it? And I noticed that the smoke is coming over in Miley area, and is there any stats right now with it? Because I know that Kuniya is on evacuation notice, so.
So as far as, as far as we know, we haven't been informed of any of them worrying about it coming over the ridge. As far as how big it is, I mean, a lot of, I don't know the exact number of companies that were there from our department alone, but I know that there is multiple agencies working. And usually due to the time of day, they usually have to suspend firefighting capabilities and depending on where the fire gets to. So I noticed a little bit of smoke coming over into the N A D area, but it definitely died down from earlier today, as far as what we saw. And we haven't been alerted as far as if we need to watch this side yet. So it depends a lot on the terrain and the prevailing winds and how they're blowing and how it'll change throughout the night. And then, if anything, if it does come over the ridge, I'm not sure, they'll still be in command on the Kuniya side, and then will be sent out if need be. But as far as like official stats, we haven't been, all we have is what we had on our computer earlier today.
Okay. So is your department active on that area, including the military being it's also with the Kuniya Schofield area?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the Board? Thank you so much for supporting our community, especially during the wildfires, and especially with the Ahuna family. If you folks ever need resources, please reach out to us so we can get those resources out to the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Aloha. Next on the agenda, we have Honolulu Police Department. Online.
Good evening. Corporal Corey Makino, District Eight Community Policing. Also online with me, I have Sergeant Fumi Moroka and Lieutenant Marina Correll. The statistics for July for two thousand and twenty-five, motor vehicle thefts was twenty-three in our district, two in the Nanakuli Mailei area. Burglaries was fourteen in the district and four in our area. Thefts was hundred-ten in the district and fifteen in our area. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, seventeen for the district and four in our area. Total calls for service for the district was nine thousand one hundred eleven. Total calls in our area was one thousand five hundred fifty. Traffic statistics in the area, we had forty-four speeding citations, three hundred sixty-three moving violations, forty-two parking violations, and total citations issued was seven hundred and six. And leave to answer a question that we had last month regarding the burglaries. Arrest made for the months of June and July, we had a total of seven arrests that was made. And that's for, I believe, our district. And another statistic that we have is the total arrests that we have in the Nanakuli or from the Nanakuli area to Makaha was a total of three hundred and two arrests. Other than that, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you. Any questions from the community or H P D? Seeing none. Any questions from the Board? Board Member Manoa?
Aloha. I was wondering if there is a report of repeat offenders in regards to any of the statistics that you were able to give us? Maybe not that you can give us now, but maybe at a later date? And for the repeat offenders, what, I know it's individualized, but hopefully there's follow-up with those? Thank you.
Yeah, we get try our best to see if we can get any type of numbers. Yeah, like you say, it's individualized, and we'll have to look into each individual arrests and look at the priors for that particular person.
Thank you. Board Member Cowles?
Hi, Corporal. I've got a couple things. First thing is, I want to send my condolences to the Police Department for their loss on Maui, their police officer on Maui.
Thank you.
It's a huge loss throughout the whole state, as a matter of fact. My question is, do you have any record or stats on how the buyback program went this past Friday at the Waimea Police Station? I know they had a weapons buyback on Friday. I just wanted to know if you have any stats on that?
Yeah, for the buyback, I believe we had a total of, and then correct me if I'm wrong, eighty-three total firearms was turned in during that time on Friday.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate you guys doing that. It was a big help for this side.
Thank you. Board Member Dela Cruz?
Aloha. My question is regarding Sunday with the accident, we lost a twenty-year-old. Is there any update on it?
I don't have any information regarding the incident. I believe if it gets forwarded to the Traffic Division, and it still would be pending investigation. Yeah, so sorry, I don't have any information regarding that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Board? Would you be able to send the statistics of your report, provided at the start of your update, to us? And if in the future, we can get something more in advance so that our Board members can reference and ask questions according to the statistics that you're providing?
We can do that for you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Corporal Makino.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the community for H P D?
Aloha, H P D. I'm Austin Salcedo. And let's go make a statement because of gratitude and thanks for recovering stolen construction trailer for equipment. And the trailer was found over at Kuniya, Kuniya Agricultural Lands up in Kuniya. It was recovered. It's stolen by a locally-owned contractor, a family member of ours. And it was a large trailer, eight tires, mind you, on this trailer, but it was recovered. One of two trailers were recovered. But the only problem was H P D didn't have jurisdiction on agricultural land. So what I did, I called state law enforcement and gave them the tip line, and I called this number, and the intake hotline took this information and ran with it because the state law enforcement will have jurisdiction all over islands from here to the Big Island. But making awareness and to this agricultural tip line for any type of agriculture crimes, even stolen goods being brought and stored on agricultural land. So it works. So thank you to H P D and state law enforcement. Great gratitude. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the text or call line is eight oh eight, four two seven, three three two three. Mahalo.
Thank you. It works.
Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Edmund. I have a three-part question for the Corporal, H P D. First one is, how many years of service do you have? Second one is, in your years of service, have you had to draw your weapon and fire at a criminal suspect? And the third one is, during your career, have you ever had shots fired at you?
Forty years of service, I have twelve, coming up on thirteen years. And sorry, with the second question, sorry, what was the second question again?
If you had to ever draw your weapon and fire at a criminal suspect?
Draw my weapon, yes, and fire, no, I have not fired my weapon at a suspect during my career. And as far as shots fired in my direction, no, I have not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Aloha, Kalaiso Salcedo. I want to reach out to H P D, thanking you folks for the diligent responsibility you folks have taken. But we also got to remember, we are shot-handed, but they're doing the best they can. And the way we can help them, if we see something, we got to say something. It's a kuka-kuka thing. Stop allowing, if you folks see something, stop allowing it, edging and abetting, or bad behavior, or anything. When you see our Ahunas getting threatened or everything, say something. We're not a leader. We're a voice when it comes to my Ahuna. Ah, Oli, you don't bully them. I'm coming after you. Do not bully them. Mahalo.
Any further questions for H P D? Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Honolulu Ocean Safety Department, Kelly Crony.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Cron. I'm the District Captain for the Lee Word Coast Operations of Ocean Safety, our newly-formed department. Let me give you the stats for July. For Kahue Point, we had an attendance of twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-five. We had three hundred ninety-seven preventive actions. We had four hundred and four thousand, six hundred public contacts. We had eleven rescues, and we had two hundred minor first aids. Nanakuli Beach Park, we had attendance of forty-seven thousand preventive actions. We had six thousand, seven hundred public contact. We had four thousand. We had one drowning, and we had a hundred and seventy-eight minor first aids. Depots Beach, we had an attendance of five thousand, eight hundred. We had four hundred and ninety preventive actions. We had seven hundred and fifty public contacts, and we had ninety-nine minor first aids. Miley Beach Park, I'll combine both towers for you. The beach park had an attendance of sixty thousand. We had four thousand, nine hundred public preventions. We had four thousand public contacts. We had five rescues, and we had a hundred, sorry, two hundred and thirty-nine first aids during that month. Some of the highlights are, this goes to, sorry, nine-one-one. I get off the phone. We did have one drowning at Nanakuli Beach Park, a sixty-year-old male, non-related. We had another C P R case in Nanakuli Park. He lived Nanakuli, down by the K F C. We recovered a body, and that was in the middle of July. We had, a little bit up the coast, we had an eighteen-foot boat that drifted on the rocks in the middle of the night. We tried to recover that. You guys saw the boat broken half and split up and it's gone now. Multiple shark sightings. Nanakuli Beach Park, a ten-to-twelve-foot non-aggressive tiger shark. Nanakuli Beach Park, another non-aggressive tiger shark. We had two divers that were overdue from Kohleina Wagon on a boat. We found them. We had unconscious male in the bathrooms at Nanakuli Beach Park. We had another seizure at Kahue Point. We had a fifty-year-old lady with difficulty breathing at Miley. Also, sorry, multiple monk seal reports all the way down the coast. We've been seeing them more and more. Sorry about this. We had some several thefts, and we also had a lady sleeping on the median at Hakemo Road that we had to respond to. It was kind of a busy month. I'll recap next month when we get all the stats.
Take a deep breath after that. Any questions from the community for ocean safety? Any questions from the community for ocean safety? Seeing none. Any questions from the Board? Board Member Myers? Oh, please approach the mic.
Kalaiso Salcedo.
Talking on the mic for the minutes.
Okay, okay. Okay. Auntie, you know, okay, thank you. Kalaiso Salcedo, do you notice the difference of the visitors and tour boats come on our side? Is that, and the fact that you had noticed? You know, that's what we want to put out there, is the tour boats, the charm of the water, is there a problem that you folks see and have to address?
With the tour boats, we're kind of in contact of all of them, so they call us. The number of tour boats, I don't know. To open an operation, Co., when I think if you have cash, you can open an operation. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but Waimea Harbor has a set limit of permits that they're allowed to give out for the number of boats. But I'm not sure about private marinas. But we're in contact with the tour boats. We've had C P R cases, we have missing swimmers, we had people going anaphylactic shock, pretty much everything.
The other question is, we noticed that, you know, a lot of tourism comes out on our side because they started to see how art this shit is and beautiful beaches. How many rescue have you had with visitors?
I'd have to ask my boss for that one. But when we do our log sheets, our rescue reports, it just puts the individual name, age, and ethnicity. But it doesn't, we won't say if it's tourist or local or visitor. I don't think we can, I'm not sure we can do that.
Thank you. Any further questions from the community? Seeing none. Board Member Myers? Board Member Manoa?
You answered one of my questions because I wanted to know for the sixty-year-old that drowned in Nanakuli Beach Park, if they were local or tourists? Is it possible to add it on the report to kind of get an idea if it's, if it's a tourist coming here with ignorance about our water conditions? Yeah?
Not a hundred percent.
Or if it's a local drowning trying to save a tourist?
No, it was, for the case was if somebody drowned in, I don't know if it was local or tourist. And when we do the reports, they go to the medical examiner, and then from there, we're not allowed to even ask the hospital or even which ambulances, where they're going in the ambulances.
Okay. Because your, our Nanakuli High School coach, football coach, died from trying to save tourists at that same beach park. Yeah. And when you said sighting of a tiger shark outside of Nanakuli Beach Park, honestly, God is my witness. I was just thinking of going back swimming in Nanakuli Beach Park because of the healing properties of being in the ocean. And you can see from this calm-natured man over here, he goes in the water all the time. I like some of his calm nature. And so I, how close to the shoreline was that tiger shark sighted?
That one was fifty yards.
I'm sorry?
Non-aggressive, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Non-aggressive fifty yards, not fifty yards.
Fifty yards.
So maybe here to the fence, fence line over there?
Oh.
If aggressive ones, yeah.
Well, that's when they actually saw him, yeah? He couldn't maybe come in within five feet and never see him till he was out there. I'm a little bit paranoid of sharks, but anyway, stay on the land, right?
Yeah.
But I appreciate you guys. I just cannot emphasize enough how much I appreciate you and your team and what you guys do for our community. Yeah. And so again, I really do hope that we can get sufficient funding for you folks or encourage our legislators, our council members, our city council, and our mayor, because ultimately that's about lives, right? You guys are still first responders.
Yes.
But, and the ocean, we kind of breathe in the ocean, our human beings, but thank you so much for your report.
Thank you for having us here. We did get a new information officer, and I'm not sure the dates. I'll let you know, I think it'll be a month or two. They're going to put out something, I believe, on commercial or something. I'm not sure, not a hundred percent sure what they're going to put out. Public service announcements.
Nice, nice. Thank you.
Board Member Manoa?
Aloha. I have three questions. Are the summer months usually more active? Yeah.
Yeah, definitely if the kids out of school.
Okay. And then, do you folks have enough lifeguards to provide service to all of the visitors?
Feeding the needs of our district right now, but it's always, it's changing, it's growing up and down as the department grows.
Okay. And then the last one, considering our visitors that come to Hawaii, are there, because I haven't been in a hotel room for a long time, promotion, TV commercials on ocean safety?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're still doing it on Hawaii there, but I'm not sure in the hotels. I can look into that, ask.
Yeah. When I go and visit like Colorado, they'll have promotions on, announcements on there on how to keep yourself safe, you know, while you're in a certain area, as you're going through a different type of entertainment area. So, you know, that could be helpful for them too. And maybe if you could suggest that to the powers that be.
Definitely.
Thank you. Any further questions for ocean safety? Board Member I O?
First of all, I want to compliment you, folks, the statistics that you're giving, all the numbers, they match up real good. I only have one question, and the other one is a comment. The question is, Kahue Point Lifeguard Station, what number is that one?
Oh, forty, four zero.
Four zero, okay. Do you have a phone number for that guard station?
No.
And the reason why I asked that question, sir, I had a shark sighting just yesterday morning. I saw the shark. So what I did, I didn't give it to the guard shack because I have to bring my canoe in and go up to the tower and talk to the guy. So what I did, I went to the Oloholo Kai, that's the catamaran, the blue and white catamaran.
Yeah.
Went there to talk to Captain Todd of the catamaran to have them call the guard station check and let them know about the shark sighting I saw, which was like about maybe twenty-five yards, closer than your fifty. But I don't know if they, they got that, I just want to know if they got that information because that's the only way I can pass.
If it's from Todd, he would call us right away.
He would call you?
He would, he didn't call me, but he might have called the rescue operators down there. I'm pretty much, I'm pretty sure like most of the captains on the coast, at least all the ones wanting to have my number.
So all I want to do is get a number that I can call directly.
I think if you call, if you call nine-one-one, they'll patch us over, they'll patch you over.
But you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go from one to the next, and then by the time you get it, or whoever gets it up in the shack, they're not going to see what I saw.
Yeah.
Seriously. You know, so I want to get direct contact. It's just me, I'm underwater.
No, 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 no. Definitely call nine-one-one, and they'll call our dispatch, and our dispatch relays it right to us. They're right.
Thank you. That's it.
No worries. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions from the Board? Seeing none. Thank you so much for ocean safety.
Hi, Samantha Decourt, N S D Senate. I just wanted to make a mention on the record that I did communicate with Chief Kurt Lager to see if they can implement drone training with their lifeguards, because prior to ocean safety, taking over the waters, the safety of the waters, H F D was doing it, and they do drone training. This looks out for sharks, tiger sharks, all those kinds of things. So I was just wondering if we could take that back to Kurt and then start that conversation again, because tiger sharks are being more prevalent on our shores. We see them down at Makaha Beach all the time, and they come in really close to shore, but good thing, some of the uncles down there, they have their own drones. So before they actually, you know, take the students into the water for training or for school, they actually take the drone out there. So if you could just take that back to ocean safety to implement the drone training and set aside funds to get equipment and training and all that kind of stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. No further questions. Appreciate your time coming out and stay safe out there. Thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have military officials' monthly reports. The Army Representative Lieutenant Colonel Ricky MacArthur.
Aloha, all right, Lieutenant Colonel MacArthur, representing US Army Garrison Hawaii. I have three announcements for you this month. The first is our monthly training advisory. There will be artillery and mortar and demolition training from today to the 22nd, the 25th to 28th August. It'll be both day and night fire. If you have any issues or concerns, you can reach out to our community line at 808-787-1528. Next, the Nikoa Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta will take place on August 23rd at Fort Durese Beach from 7:40 AM to 4:00 PM. Launched in 2009, the Nikoa Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta was created to assist recovering troops through the healing power of the Hawaiian waters. And the event first took place in the Pearl Harbor Marina with 67 teams from the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Air Force, Coast Guard and other organizations. The event has expanded to include a youth division and include our Gold Star Ohana to the Wounded Warrior Division. Lastly, the 25th Infantry Division will execute its annual Joint Pacific Multinational Radiance Center Training Exercise between October and November 2025. Please be aware that there will be an increase in traffic and noise. More details will follow in the coming months as we get closer to the exercise. And the Army will share as much information as possible to keep the community informed. But I've been your questions, this is the announcements this month.
Thank you, any questions for Army from the community?
Hi, my name is Edmund. It's not a question, but a compliment. I just want to say, you know, though I did not evacuate, I showed it in place. But the Army and the Navy really stepped up on July 29th by allowing Koli Koli Pass to be an exit route. You know, and they, you know, they said they would always step up when there was a true emergency. And they did.
Thank you, any questions from the board for Army? Board member Cowles.
Wasn't just, not really a question, I was just going to back him up. But I just wanted to pass on our condolences, if you can, to the commander of the base for the help in opening up Koli Koli Pass for outside here, along with the Navy. You guys worked together and that was, that was awesome. I appreciate that.
You, board member Dela Cruz.
Aloha. My question is the Cunha fires that's going on, is the Schofield barracks in alert? And any stats on that?
When I left the base at 5:00 PM, there was no alert for the base itself. The road was closed, so we could not go down that route. I did see, we did have aircraft supporting the firefighters putting out the fire. But right now, I'm not tracking it affecting the barracks itself.
Thank you, please send our greatest mahalo to your department with, from our community here on this side for everything that you guys do. Thanks.
Mahalo, appreciate your time. Next on, we have Navy Representative Joel Felipe on line. Okay, moving on to presentations. PVT Landfill Annual Report with Ben Yamamoro.
Thank you, board, for having us on tonight. We're giving our yearly status report. Nothing has really changed. We continue accepting construction debris. The, we, I think we're going to have about the same amount by the end of the year as last year. We had a few good months, very good months. But then everything averages out and I think it'll be about the same as last year. I can say that the only thing that's different is that we've, we've been talking about our ag property in the front, along our neighbors, where we're planning to have more flowers, more plants for our, for the kids to come and pick it when it's going to raise. You know, we're really surprised, there's not enough flowers here in Hawaii. And so we're going to have more flowers, more Hawaiian, a type of native plants growing there. And we're starting, so we welcome all of you who like to come by, see the landfill and see our acreage of wine, wine plants. Any questions?
Any questions from the community for PVT Landfill? Please approach the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, my name is Edmund. And you mentioned that the front of your property is going to turn into agriculture use? Does that property have an underground lining?
Yes, we have a fresh water coming in.
Excuse me, maybe we need to make it more clear. An underground lining that protects leakage of any kind? You know, they mentioned when the landfill, the the solid waste landfill closes, they're not going to plant any trees because the roots of the trees can penetrate the lining and contaminate the ground. So if you're planting these items, can they penetrate that lining and contaminate the ground? When you make your switch from industrial solid waste to agriculture?
The trees, the agriculture portion where we're growing the native plants will not be planted on the landfill itself. We, we have to maintain that landfill after we close for 30 years. The only thing that we can put in is correct. If we put trees in the, on that portion of the land, we cannot put anything that will penetrate the lining on the top. The portion I'm talking about is a portion along the housing area, which is ag land. And we don't have any, it's not a landfill, it's not part of the landfill.
Can you remind us of the date of your closing date expected?
We, we feel we have five to seven years to go. It's all going to depend on the economy and construction.
Any questions from the community? Yep, please approach the mic.
Aloha, kalae sausseto. Have you folks ever did an air testing? Air testing? For chemicals within the air because we all know chemicals rises in the air. You know, it don't just stay in the ground, it rises in the air. And if you did, when was the last testing that you folks had done?
I have my partner coming in, he's a little late. He was with me, but I don't know what happened, but. Oh, you're here, come on in.
Now, yeah, I can comment on that. My name is Albert Shigemura and I used to manage or help. I was an administrative, I was the president of the company at one time. But yes, they have done air monitoring, the DOH has done monitoring twice on that property. And all along the fence line, property line, you set up air monitors. And we didn't do it, you know, it was done by the Department of Health. And there was no release of any toxins or chemicals of any sort.
Okay, it was tested by the Department of Health. I would appreciate if you folks, your company, communicate with them and get a report. Because we would like to know. Because, you know, this is our kulihana, this is our community, this is our people that we're talking about. And their lives are very special. So I would appreciate if you folks could communicate, let us know when was the last time you folks tested? Who tested it? Because we need to know what is going to be left behind. Because that's all our kulihana.
Well, I can't answer for Department of Health at this time, but I would think if you would call them, they will provide you that information.
I understand that, sir. But your company requested them for the testing. I'm asking if you folks could collaborate with them? The community can do it. But I'm asking, can you folks communicate? Because you guys know the time, the date and the person you dealt with. Instead of, we chasing our tails. We just want direct answers. We deserve direct answers. Mahalo.
Thank you. Questions from the, from the board? Yep. So board member Tector, Dela Cruz and IO? Myers, Manoa.
Aloha, thank you for always coming and trying to update us and the community. The question I have is, is there a cap that your company, as far as height, is concerned with the debris during a wind, like strong wind? In its essence of how high will you go until it's done?
The max, there is a limit and it's 270 feet. And, but it's not a block wall. It's terraced and built so that can control the drainage and the runoff. And because of the air wind, those factors come into play. But there is a daily cap put on any rubbish that is landfilled that day. And whatever that working space is, it's covered. And then it's wetted down with the water trucks so that, you know, to compact it in. And that's to minimize as much as possible windy conditions.
Aloha, my question is, I have two. With the Department of Health, is there any timeline that you guys did the testing with them that you can provide?
I'm sorry, say that again, the timeline?
Yeah, the timeline that they did the air testing.
Yeah, they did two. One was maybe in '08 and another one was done in maybe 2012, right around that time.
Is it possible that you can get one that's current today?
Well, that's just, yeah, I mean, they did it, you know. We didn't request it. In fact, I think the community did request it. It's in the neighborhood board minutes, you know, the results going back.
Thank you for that clarification. My second question will be, I believe the offer of having the community come and see the place, mentioning plants that is planted for cultural and heritage. I'd like to see and be able to come and see that.
Just give me a call and you're welcome anytime.
Thank you, our board can coordinate outside visit, thank you. Board member IO.
I was going to go last, but mine's, my questions are right to the point. You folks do, you folks do own the land across on the other side of the roadway, Lululele? Correct, so far? Am I correct? The land that's across from PVT, yeah? How many acres is that, sir?
That's roughly 400 acres. That's up to the top of the mountain, the flat areas are about 200.
About 200 acres then? Okay. With today's growing price, how much would that cost? If someone wants to buy that 400 acres from you? Do you know that price? To buy that 400 acres?
No, not right off hand.
You wouldn't know, right?
I don't have a number.
Okay, so my, my last question, is the last question. Would you like to sell that land to someone for, for the price that's the fair market value? That's the only question, that's the last question.
Really, we don't have any intentions of selling it right now. We don't know what we really want to do with it. But as we mentioned at the last meeting, what we really like to do is, if we're to do it, is to create some kind of agricultural land there, whether it's with the community or with ourselves. The problem with that land is there's no water.
That's correct.
And, and
You have to get the water there.
And then we have to work with the Navy and the Navy, I don't think it's interesting for us to put a pipe in or anything. There's really no water there and that's our major problem. The second problem is the dirt there, is the soil, is, you know, on a scale of one to five, they're one. And it's a very bad type of soil for agriculture. So there are many things that we have to consider if we're to go into farming or cattle or and at the same time, you know, we like to do that, but we're working on that landfill right now. And that's our dream because we can't do anything else with it. We cannot, we will not go across the street to, for expansion. That is hope, as you know.
I understand that. The last question, sir. How much did you purchase that land for? At the time that you purchased it? That's the only question, that's the last one.
So long ago. I would say, I would say somewhere around three or four million dollars.
Thank you, so we have to talk after this then. Thank you.
Okay. Board member Myers.
Thank you. Just to give it an idea, Lululele bought less acres than that, right? Green homes bought behind Sack and Save. And they're now wanting to sell about 200, $1 million homes there. So they're going to be getting more money off of developing homes than what I think you guys would have right up against the mountain. But anyway, my question has to do with your, in September, the DOT Department, the Department of Transportation, the state plans to open Pa'akea Road permanently 24/7, which is further up to access Lululele Naval from Hakemo. So the state is planning on opening it. I was going to attend Repkeela's town hall, but then that's the day we had the tsunami. Because I was going to ask him, what is the Navy going to do when we come on Lululele? Especially at night, right? There's no streetlights that are illuminate and there's no sidewalks there. I know that that was always the problem. But I guess my, my request to PVT is, can you guys let, start letting the truckers know that coming September, once Pa'akea gets open, that road is going to get busier from people that want to access Lululele Naval to bypass Farrington Highway using Hakemo coming from Wa'ana'i. So I don't know what the quality of the traffic is going to come on Lululele Naval, but I expect it to be more than what it currently is. So if you can let them know to be Makahala to traffic, vehicle, vehicular traffic during the day. And I know you guys close that evening, right? So if they can just be more mindful
Yes, I, I will.
Of when they exiting your
Yes.
And I know when they exit your area, there's kind of like a blind spot, yeah? I mean, what's coming around the curve? My concern is the speedsters that are going to use that road to get faster to Nanakuli and maybe potentially coming at a high speed. So we never had a conversation as a community, once Pa'akea opens up, how, I mean, my solution is speed bumps. But, you know, we, we always wanted to just get the first step, which was have the state open it up 24/7. Of course, if we said, oh, we like you also spend money on Lululele Naval, they may have gone, oh, I don't want to talk about even opening up Pa'akea. So we've been going incremental steps. And I'm just asking if you guys can, can let the truckers know.
Yes, we will. We always send out notices to our customers.
Thank you.
For safety, safety is always the main issue for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, board member Manoa.
Aloha, I think I am the garden person on this committee. So I have a few garden and land type of questions for you. And I apologize if I'm already asking a question that was already answered in a couple of agendas ago. But why growing plants in that area?
For one, it's ag, ag land. And we want to, we always wanted to make the area green. That's why even from the past, if you enter, our, our, enter our property, it was always like a park. And that was the main idea, on the right-hand side, we enter now, we have a lot of lemon trees, lime trees. And the left side, along the, the presented side, has always been green. So if you could come and take a look, it's, that's what we want to create a park there.
Okay, and then are you working with specialists in regards to planting and the types of And the types of plants that you're gonna be putting there?
No, we sort of have an idea. We talk to people. And we have a landscaper in putting in the plants. We're not doing it ourselves.
Okay, and then your water source for those plants?
We have city water.
And then, will this help with fire mitigation?
Pardon me?
Will this land development that you guys are doing support or help with fire mitigation? Was that a thought? Fire mitigation. Fire mitigation to prevent fires.
Fire mitigation.
Which side of the land we're talking about? On the landfill side, fire entrance?
Where are you gonna be growing the plants? I was just wondering if that was
The green space.
It is.
Yeah.
As it's it would
It would help mitigate a fire. Of course, I guess if it's a raging blaze coming from the ocean, it may be very difficult to manage, but it is a barrier, otherwise. Because it's always green, because it's irrigated. That area is irrigated.
Okay, and maybe if you have the opportunity, I'm not sure if you did, to attend maybe the Firewise workshops? Because they do talk about distance of plants to housing. I'm not sure if you folks had that opportunity yet, but that's been happening in our community throughout the Moku.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, so I do invite you to do that.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Board Member Kowals.
I'm a retired truck driver, 42 years over here. And I used to go into PVT almost every day. And from the years that you've been open to now, to me, my opinion is, it's been a big improvement. And I know you folks have tried to, over the years, tried to appease some of the neighbors. I understand. You're gonna get some dust, yeah, but you gotta deal with it. But I haven't been in there in a couple of years. I'm retired, but I haven't been there in a couple of years, so I don't know what it looks like now. But before, when you folks first started planting the trees and stuff along that the housing area where the houses are in the backside, it's looking pretty good. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's looking pretty good. And I'd say you folks have come a long ways from when you folks first opened up.
Thank you. Please come again.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none. If you can provide us with an updated report, a written document, so that we can reference this and provide each record to our board members here. And then, we will work with you further to schedule a site visit for an opportunity for every one of our board members to be able to see the current state of PVT and be a part of the conversation in you moving forward with the property across the street. And so, we will be pushing for a request as well to have an updated record from the Department of Health since your 2012 record. So, if you folks can begin working on planning for that as well. So, thank you. I appreciate your time. Any further questions? Any further comments you'd like to make? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. Yes. See you soon. Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, resident and community concerns. If anyone present in the room has any concerns, please approach the mic, state your name. Any residents online, please raise your virtual hand.
Hi, my name is Edmund. Before I get started, I'm gonna upset a lot of people. My committee's concern is about the Director of Law Enforcement, Lambert's response to a question from last week, Tuesday, involving resource officers, right? My understanding of resource officer is a good guy with a gun in the school. And he mentioned something about retired police officers are gonna be the first ones selected, right? That is my concern. That's why I asked those questions of that corporal earlier. He had 12 years of service. He drew but never fired. He has never taken fire. So, here we are, putting a 67-year-old grandpa and grandma in a situation where they have never fired a shot at a suspect ever. They may have been great at shooting downrange and hitting a paper target. But you know, like my man Bruce Lee from Enter the Dragon, balls do not hit back. Paper targets do not shoot back. And when paper targets shoot back, we have what happened on August 15 in Pa'ia, right? A female officer, 37 years old, in her prime, in her prime, shot and killed. January 20, 20, Diamond Head, two police officers, 30 years old, in their prime. So, here we have a 67 retired police officer, athletic knees. I'm 63. I sure as hell cannot do what I did when I was even 43 now, right? You have athletic legs, a greater hands, your vision is not as well as it once was. And your agility and quickness to draw and fire and hit what you're aiming at is not there any longer. This is not the correct age group for this. And in closing, you guys probably seen this commercial, "I fall in and I can't get up." That's your 67-year-old retired police officer.
Thank you. Any further community concerns?
Aloha, Kalaisa Salsero. You know, we just had the spokesperson of PVT. That's 13 years old, years ago, since Department of Health ever did the air quality testing. That's a big concern, because what had happened within these past 13 years, that's a big concern. I'm concerned because I have a lot of family members out in this district. And people, like I said, we travel to see our family. We could be Makaha, we could be Ha'ula, Kani Oi, but they come here to visit us, because we're the Ohana. So, I am concerned for Akupuna and the residents, for the whole 96792. So, we need to address that, and we need the answers. We cannot allow things fall through the cracks. That's what we have you folks there. And that's all we ask is to be diligent, and we need to be that. Because you folks are the front people that the community is looking at for answers. So, I know, I'm proud of you folks, asking questions that's not too much people would ask. Or they're too scared, or they don't want retaliation. We don't see nothing. We don't say nothing. Nothing's gonna happen. Mahalo.
Aloha, I'm Austin Salcedo. I'd just like to give a big shout out for our Senator Samantha Decourt in her town hall that was presenting the Wa'ani Ark of Safety. It came with a lot of important people, executive people, with a lot of authority. But a great shout out, because we had senators out there. We had representatives out there, state officials, OHA officials, DOE. And majority that I brought along was people from the Agriculture Committee in the community. Poultry owners in Wa'ani, the largest poultry owners. We had ranchers. We had people from Wa'ila came in, ranchers, all agriculture landowners. There was actually, and also small, self-sustainable agriculture providers as well, too, like myself. But we came before, thank you, Senator, we're bringing all these people and all this caliber in state law enforcement and to provide a sureness that President Duke Pia's Duke's Law is gonna be implemented July 1st, and it was a sure thing. We had the Pia family in presence in the house, providing supportive for Duke's Law. But this is a word that went out. The first line of defense is a no trespassing sign. We had our Department of Agriculture Director Sharon Hurd, Hawaii Farms Bureau, Brian Mio-Moto there, all present there, providing answers to any type of question that there was. I had a kupuna come up to me, because it was issuing out no trespassing signs freely, samples of them. And she asked me, "How can I help and protect my land?" 80-something-year-old, because she was threatened by young ones that's encroaching her property. So, right away, I turned, I looked towards the state law enforcement, who was there, "Please provide her support," which it did. So, they're gonna give an assessment and provide her support as well, too, for agriculture crime prevention. So, I'd like to put a big shout out for Honorable Senator Samantha Decourt and her team for providing this wonderful town hall. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Aloha.
Hello, my name is John. My mom lives on Hakemo and Farrington, further corner. My concern is about the homeless situation going on across the street, and what is being done about that. It was brought up two meetings ago. Wasn't really met with the best response. So, we kinda let it go. In that time, it's gotten worse. It's gotten much more crowded there. You know, they're dumping their oil, their radiator fluid, everything over there, their mess, whatever like that. It's much more traffic. Nothing good comes from this. There's been fires, there's been more disruptions. Next door neighbors have had their mail invaded. My mom's mailbox has got busted down, houses have been broken into. I just wanted to know, what is the plan? I talked to Representative Moroka, and he told me that the plan was that you guys were gonna get out the people that needed help and wanted help. Unfortunately, that lives behind all the people that don't want help, or don't wanna seek any type of help. And you're right across from a residential area. So, I don't understand how come everything is compressed into that area, right across from houses, instead of like, I don't know, sewers or something, that there's no residential impact. Yeah, that's really, makes me my most question right there. And when can we see some resolution? Because like I said, in the past month and a half, it's gotten worse. The amount of traffic that's going in and out of there is pretty crazy. People dropping off pallets, dropping off furniture. Yeah, and even if you notice, they're going back onto the point now, they're building structures now at the point. So, I just wanted to know what was the plan? It's getting pretty bad. Also, if you guys can work on the timing of that Hakemo light, because people are just sitting there and revving their engines, revving their engines, and it's getting pretty bad. And the light was knocked down today at Hakemo Turn right there from a semi. Got video if you guys wanna see it. That's about it. Thanks.
George Grace, Nanakuli resident of Hakemo. I'd like to echo a little bit on Austin, that town hall meeting that Samantha had. Very impressive. I was impressed with that meeting. Lot of information, a lot of good vibe was in that building. Very, very good. I mean, we should have more like that. Regarding the homeless, yeah, I'm always, I went to a lot of the mayor's town halls, listened to what the state get, and I'm gonna kinda, kinda like just shadow back on how, what I presented to the mayor is that it's obvious that everybody not pulling in the same direction, whether it be the city, the state, nonprofits, even community members. The analogy I gave him is like ants. You watch ants work. When they're trying to take something back to their little halifu eat them, right? They're gonna bump into each other, get chaos, but you give them a little bit of time. They're all gonna work in one direction. They're gonna get something done. We're not doing that. I've been to a lot of meetings where a lot of people talk about what they're going to do, what they should do. But it's like, if this group didn't think of it, that group don't like it. Or, "We wanna do this, but nobody wants it in the neighborhood." It's in our neighborhood. And the sad thing is, when you drive past that place, get kids. You know, I get 15 grandkids. And I try picture myself, picture my grandkids on that beach. I would not have it, you know? So, my grandkids are fortunate. That kid's not. So, you know, if I had the power turned off in my house, and my neighbors would call the cops on me if I was neglecting my kids, how can everybody drive past this and not do nothing? You know, so, I, you know, I probably get more questions than answers from everybody. And I'm sure everybody's trying to do something, but nobody thinking in the right direction. So, who suffer? We all suffer. I like my, I don't get even swim. I don't go to the beach. I drive past. My kids like go to the beach, cannot, because we get all this chaos about it. People dying, get fires, get murders. You know, they got the people out of Diamond Head, because they're scared they set the mountain on fire. It fires on our beach. You're finding people dead, you know, and still yet, get kids, whatever. So, I don't know what can be done. I am one person who is willing to help in any way possible, any way possible. Brainstorm together, do something, but if nobody pulling in the right direction. That's just my opinion now. It's only my opinion. I think nobody pulling in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha. Thank you for the second time around. Picking back on Georgie Boy's question, but there is laws out there already. It's a state law. Actually, it's a US Supreme Court's law. It's, you can't block private access to anything. It's Hawaii Revised Statutes, Section 708-814. Please look at that, because this is the same sign as of no trespassing at the A'la'kea Court Building on their property. And we have the same identified Hawaii Revised Statute on all the areas on the city parks as well, too. Can't block public access. So, HPD is short-handed. So, what's the next best thing? Our state law enforcement. Because the Sheriff's Department is engaging in protecting our state courthouses. There's no encampments at the courthouses. Why can't we collaborate with them, reach out, and utilize the resources of the Sheriff's Department for HPD? So, there is an answer, but it's just law enforcement's resources out here, reinforcement. So, remember, HRS, Section 708-814. Okay, that's how I got this here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further resident community concerns? Nothing online. Thank you. Moving on to official monthly reports, Governor Josh Green's representative, Department of Agriculture Chair Sharon Hurd.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to make a report. I'm gonna start with asking Chair if you received my response, delayed response to Member Myers? You did? Okay, thank you.
Correct, and it was sent.
Going back a little bit to the community concerns, I understand, I share the concern that the previous gentleman met said, because, "Thank you for timing this meeting right at 7 o'clock-ish, when the sun was dropping into the ocean." It's just breathtaking. You don't get to see that in the city. So, I stopped, got out, parked, watched it fall into the ocean, took a picture. Something you get benefit of every day, and it is not correct, that it's not accessible to people. It's just so special. So, start my clock now, please. Okay, so, on the recap, I left five copies of the Governor's message on the table. It's the July message. Next to it is the Department of Agriculture's loans, the new loans that we have. Please take a look. If you're a farmer, those loans are really different. They're the legislature passed, legislature passed for us last session. All last year, we had four loans that we gave up, fiscal year, June to July to June. Already this year, in the month of August, we have already done five loans, and we've got another five in the pipeline. These loans are so innovative. They have lines of credit. The loan cap is capped, it's capped at 4%. It's a real, the programs that we have on the table there are pretty good. Okay, so, that now tomorrow, from the Department of Agriculture, I'm gonna start with a little bit of housekeeping. On June 27th, House Bill 427, Act 236 passed. It officially changed our name from the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity. The acronym we use is DAB, D-A-B. So, it's officially the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity to bring attention to the fact that we are putting all the biosecurity concerns under the Department of Agriculture. We have five years to make the full transition, but we're on our way. Thank you. Tomorrow, we have a rapid recruitment at the plant quarantine on Awiki Street. Act 231 gave us Act two thirty one gave us forty-four positions to enforce our biosecurity rules. We are going to be recruiting for those positions. Um, we actually have interviews scheduled, about thirty interviews scheduled tomorrow. Uh, then on the next day, we have more interviews and we will be actually doing some on the spot hiring. So please consider come down, check it out. Just, you know, check it out. Find out what uh what what jobs are open. Um, we have eighty-nine day hires. You certainly could consider that. Um, but it's tomorrow from nine to two on on Awiki Street. Um, we also have another hundred vacancies. I'm embarrassed to say that, but every time two people retire, I'm sorry, every time we hire two people, three people retire. It's just the demographics. So we're constantly on a makeup basis. Uh, we're gonna be hiring. Um, maybe important to this crowd is part of Act two thirty six, the uh the law that just passed is the branding regulations. Um, if you're a rancher, you have until the end of the year to re-register your brand, otherwise you lose it. Okay, um, it's in the state of Hawaii, we have, I think you have to do this every every few years. I'm looking for it. Okay, um, you have to rebrand. We have about eight hundred brands in the state and the reason we we have it is to identify who's the owner of that particular cattle. Part of the Act two thirty six was that we're going to make it electronic. Uh, we're gonna upload our brand so that you can you can pretty much just, you know, uh use your phone and then take a picture of the brand and it'll tell you who's the owner. So you'll know if somebody tries to sell you a cow um or a cattle, if that's the correct owner. So register your brand. That's gonna uh by the end of the year or you will lose it. And that is pretty much the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity's report. Happy to take questions.
Mahalo. Any questions from the community for our governor's rep?
And yes, it was a great town hall. A little bit raucous for me, but
it's not aloha kalesa, though. It's not a question. It's a gratitude of thanks to you folks, um making it possible and coming out and giving our community time to ask questions, giving our community assurance that our concern is not being followed upon blind eyes and deaf ears as did in the past. And I thank you folks for putting up with me, fighting for Duke's law and my up and down. I have my reasons. But I love you very much for being there and I love your uh community that we dealt with for fighting for since two thousand nineteen, coming out and answering our community now and giving them the hope that we are not being followed upon blind eyes and deaf ears. And I thank you for being there and coming out. All of you folks coming out and giving our district and giving our legislature the chance. I just don't know how to, the gratitude, how much more I can say, but you folks put up a lot with me. And I have my reasons because I love my community. All we ask is of all being in safety. Mahalo from the Department of Law Enforcement and everything for answering the calls and giving back to the community the voice that they can trust and build a relationship upon. Mahalo.
Aloha, Salsedo. Give great gratitude for our governor for signing Act two thirty five, Duke's Law on uh June twenty seventh. And with all the players that had taken place in support of that, uh, I gave great gratitude and love to what you have done for us, our Director of Agriculture, Sharon Heard. Also with Brian Miamot of uh Hawaii Farms Bureau. But also, we are bridging all the different districts. Waileua, um Haleiwa District had invited us to their town hall. And we had shared of all the information that we could give for people all in the Haleiwa North Shore, Kuniya, they were all there as well too in support of this initiative because they are faced with agriculture crimes. But with your department, Hawaii Farms Bureau, all the agriculture, even OHA was there at Samantha Decourt's town hall. This is a bridge to all the way from here around our islands. Uh, Senator Tim Richards was there from Kohala where he could put three Oahu's in his district alone. But we are bridging also with the Hawaii uh Ketamans Council as well too, here in the Big Island. But again, great gratitude and thank you Sharon Heard for your diligence and operations.
So, you know, um, the Salsedos make a great point. They were there every step of the way, but as soon as the governor signed that law, we said to each other, now what, right? What is this law gonna mean? It's, we need evidence. It's your it's it's everyone's job. Not that the law is passed. The prosecuting attorney told us, you can make the penalty a million dollars if you want to. Unless you enforce the law, nobody's gonna care. So if you see a trespasser on your property, please gather the evidence. The DLE, Deputy Director Radula, Director Mike Lambert, noted for them to put these guys away. Three trespassings and you mandatory jail, okay? It's a it's a month, but long story short, take a picture, say. You know, and and it's really hard when somebody says, hey, I lost my drone. Hey, I'm looking for my dog. You know, it's hard for you to say, well, you know, sorry, carry on. They're trespassing. Trespassing is a crime, okay? Take a picture, say, okay, let me help you look, but in the meantime, let me take a picture of you so that when I find your drone, I can get it back to you. Something like that. It's trespassing is a crime. Duke would be alive today if we enforce our trespassing laws. Okay, so gather evidence, help us. Um, you can't, you can't prosecute and get a guilty verdict without evidence. Okay, thank you.
Just to make a comment on that itself, on uh June twenty seventh, when we came on the floor of the Senate, all island senators, twenty-five of them, in support of Duke's law, twenty-five, zero reservation, zero no's. We are to all island in support of Duke's law. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Edmund. Um, this is a suggestion to the governor concerning July twenty ninth. I mean, that was chaotic. Yeah, they they could have done a better job and I think is, I don't think anybody really knows, there's tsunami maps out there. Right? So either two things, either they didn't know about the map or they don't trust it, right? So I'm giving you a suggestion that A, maybe in the future, you need to inform people. If, because there's three zones. There's a safety zone, there's a um standard tsunami zone, there's an extreme tsunami zone, right? So this is my suggestion. You get the tsunami map, you overlap that with the bottled water supply map because they know everybody's um residents and you inform them four times a year, quarterly, right? That, hey, you're in a safe zone. So when there's a tsunami, no evacuate. Yeah? A, if there is a tsunami, then you need to evacuate and you can do go up by two streets, right? And if you're in an extreme tsunami zone, which is unlikely to ever happen, when a standard one is happening, you're okay, right? So they need to be informed this well into advance before an actual tsunami came, right? So again, there's been um, you know, the last time there was a tsunami, they hit us in October two thousand twelve. It was thirteen years ago. But people may have not known about the maps, right? Like uh map fifteen, there's twenty-one tsunami maps, map fifteen real fast. Hanalei Street, if you live Hanalei, right, part of your street is in the red zone, right? Anything more of that going up to Lahaina, you're safe, right? Like I live on Franklin Highway, had traffic deadlock in front of me going west. What I suspected was people in sea country never had to move, they're in a safe zone, but they ran for the hills needlessly, needlessly. So people need to know if they're in a safe, you need to evacuate or the extreme, or else you don't trust the maps, then run.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Governor's rep? Okay, Board Member Myers, Board Member Hector, Board Member Cowles, and Manoa.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha. Thank you for your response by email to, uh, Chair had forwarded to me. Um, in regards to your response, it opens up another conversation, but instead of addressing it with you, I'd like to address it with the source. Is it possible for you to set up uh for Jun Yang, our new um homeless coordinator since March of two thousand twenty-five? Um, that oversee, he's the Director of the Statewide Office on Homelessness, not just housing, for the homelessness. Um, and the reason for that is there are several issues that come up in our community and at our neighborhood board related to homelessness and the impact on the community, but also on their impact on their lives. So our board has taken a position that we don't support Kahale because Kahale is shared kitchens, shared bathrooms. We don't see any safety in a woman or child going to a public restroom in that community when there's also men involved in the community, which is basically strangers. Tourists don't share bathrooms. When they come to Hawaii, the tourists go into a hotel and they get their own restroom in their hotel room. So there's not like they gotta go down the hallway and go share one bathroom with all the other hotel tourists. Every tourist get their own room, they get their own shower, their own bathroom. It should be no less for our community members. So the governor has put emphasis on tourism, on emphasis on Aloha Stadium, directing funds there, but we really need funds to be directed to the infrastructure for our locals who provide tax dollars to fund all these projects. So can you have Jun Yang um connect with us to be able to come, start coming to our housing committee meetings to address specifically our homeless concerns, but also our housing concerns within the Nanakuli Maile District?
Sure, um, I will listen to this recording and I will take down these questions. And it's always nice to have questions in advance before you go to a meeting because you can prepare and be more productive. But I will assure you that the top priority for the governor is homelessness and building housing for the citizens of the state. Every meeting we have, he emphasizes that, but I will pass this on and let him know that the this particular neighborhood board and maybe others does not agree with the Kahale's style and that you need another remedy and that um there'll be somebody at that next meeting. Um, and it may not be the gentleman that you're talking about, but it will be somebody from, that can speak to your issue.
Okay, we really want the decision makers on the table. We don't, I mean, as a community, we have solutions and we have questions regarding how our taxpayers, our monies are spent. I always looks at our tax dollars as our citizen checkbook. It's all of our money in one checkbook that in my mind, it's called the citizen checkbook. Well, the citizen should be involved in the solutions. So I I'll, I look forward to our email dialogue on how we can come up with the uh uh game plan moving forward into the year as far as how we can engage the director.
Yeah, Member Myers, I'm sorry if I indicated that he he wouldn't be there. I I just don't want to speak for him. You know, that he, I'll I'll pass it on with the most urgency I can and he'll, he'll know.
The only reason I'm going to you is because John Mizuno never responded to any of our calls and our emails, including me going to his office, asking his staff member if he can communicate with us. So since we never had any response from through that office or that coordinator, including his staff member, I would like to try to work with John Yang and I'm giving him the benefit of the doubt that he wants to work at our community. Especially we have a high native Hawaiian population between Nanakuli and Maile, Maile, in our, that our neighborhood board services.
I will tell them personally.
Mahalo. Thank you.
Board Member Hector.
Hi, um, props to the town hall meeting at Y and I because usually if you try to make it Nanakuli, only Maile and Nanakuli show up, maybe Honakahale, but we got people from Makaha and Nanakuli, so.
It was packed.
It's, it was also in AC. Love that. Um, the question I have, and I saw you there, thank you. Uh, can there be more clarity as far as your no trespassing law? Because I know it it refers to nobody. That includes the law. You need, you know, an affidavit or you need court papers to say I can come in.
You do, yes.
Because even if the police came, they still need documents to say you can come in. So even though there's that trespassing law and then the branding of the animals, you're talking about state land, city and county versus federal, how would that apply also to Hawaiian homesteaders that have ag and pastoral? So that's a federal jurisdiction and if that can totally be clarified.
We will.
And break it down so that everybody is clear who has the authority.
I want to, yeah, okay.
If you could send us information on that, so.
May I restate the question so I have it clear? And I I certainly can listen to the recording, but what you're saying is, is there a difference between trespass laws on state, federal, private, different DHL type lands? Is that the question?
Correct.
Okay, I, I don't think there is, but we'll double check.
Okay. Well, for example, it's uh DHS or CPS and if it reference children, they need court papers to actually come on my property, but a trespassing, no trespassing means no trespassing. So it doesn't mean you have a badge that you can come on my property. So, because everybody pays taxes, you know, and and you're you're going into a different category. So just so that we understand and we can articulate and share that to the community. Thank you.
That's fun. Thank you. Good question.
Thank you, Board Member Cowles.
Good evening, Hector. What is the app? Is there an app for the brands?
Uh, you know, there's, there is, um, it's online and we're coming up with an app. Uh, the app is uh gonna be part of the Akamai series of AI type things, but it's not ready yet. Um, I guess what we're, one of the things we're waiting for is the deadline is December twenty fifth. And then once we have all the brands registered, um, there's a ten dollar registration fee I forgot to mention. But once we have all, we know who's registered, that would be the time to upload all the the graphics and that hopefully you can just QR code it or take a picture and it'll give you the information you need.
Can you um let us know when that app is up?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Board Member Manoa.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask, the first time I think that you attended this meeting, you gave us stats on CRB.
Mm-hmm.
So I was wondering, is that gonna be, um, are you gonna be giving us updated um information about CRB?
I will. CRB is uh I think it with the CRB, it's the number of trees that we removed and we just identified eighteen on Kupoli High School grounds. So they will be on the schedule to be removed. Um, and I should point out that the trees we're removing right now are on public property. We're not, we don't do private and private, yeah? So we're doing, um, and I think we need to visit the library here. Um, yep, so we will. I have some Koki Frog stuff, but I looked at it beforehand and it's really not a problem out here.
And then one more thing, I got this email regarding um Molokai, um, and they requesting um
A petition?
Yeah, the petition.
It's gonna be on the eight twenty six.
Coming up on the twenty-six.
Yeah, it is.
Yes. So just want to make sure that that is something that is looked at so that we can keep the CRBs from Molokai.
Um, may I say something about that? Okay, the petition is very emotional. It's very passionate. Um, but for Molokai in particular, there's a lot of entryways that are not official entryways on from boats and um, the way people enter the island and it is well known that residents are bringing in fruits and vegetables and products, you know, independently. And we can do what we can and I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the reason, but I'm saying we need, it's gonna take all of us. You know, we, we plan to make that statement at the 8/26 board meeting next week, Tuesday. Welcome to come, like quarantine. But we cannot do it. There's too many pathways, you know? And we're asking for everybody to get involved so that we can keep Molokai safe. It's right now Molokai is the only island that has bovine TB, you know? And they're really suffering with that. They're, they have challenges with their beef industry that no one else in the state has. There's a, there's a school of thought that says, well, then keep it on Molokai. Well, that's not what we want to do. What we want to do is lift the quarantine. And how did it get there? Right? So we recently put on a 90-day stop movement for plants, for H5N1s, right? So you can't bring birds. It was, it was poultry. So we're doing what we can, but we, we can't be everywhere, everywhere all at once, right? Every day all at once. So we need everybody, everybody to help us. And when we address this next week, we will make that statement that, you know, the residents themselves have to be vigilant and not bring in stuff from, from other islands.
Yes. Thank you very much. And it is a kako thing. And, well, I just want to support what she said. It is a kako thing. But in a positive more way and not, you know, pointing fingers like Edmund was talking about all the ants going in one direction. Let's, let's make sure everybody.
Yes.
Just saying, everybody's in the same direction and we show aloha about it too. Aye? Mahalo.
Mahalo, board member Dela Cruz.
Aloha, Sharon. This is my third public announcement, a public aloha to the governor for his acknowledgement and cooperation with Kohavei Paina for the kingdom. We are going forward with the judiciary division with the Supreme Court. And I just wanted to mahalo publicly. The first one was in YNI board. Second one was the town hall with Samantha Decourt. And this is the third. So I believe that we sufficient enough for, to allow, to allow the office to know and the community to know that we are working together with the governor in regards. And our next meeting would be in September the 5th at noon at Hakai Bo. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for fielding all those questions. It was a lot.
My pleasure.
Appreciate you and we look forward to seeing a response. Next on our agenda, we have State Senator Samantha Decourt in person.
Aloha, everyone, Chair, board members. Mahalo, Samantha Decourt, State Senator, YNI coast. First and foremost, I just want to thank everybody for a very successful town hall. Both Nanakuli and YNI showed up strong. And so it was good to have our people there. They were present. They were very vocal. And they made sure that issues that are coming out of YNI were at the forefront and at the table. Two of the main takeaways, obviously, number one is crime and number two is homelessness. So I am continuing to work with the Department of Law Enforcement. It is a newly built agency. So I'm working with Department Director Lambert to increase their funding, to make sure that they can hire more officers, but then also get more resources. I'm thankful that his efforts continue to lie here on the YNI coast. We are not only working on pilot projects with Duke's Law, but also long-term, we are hoping to have a Department of Law Enforcement substation out here as well. So there's lots of discussion happening on the state side as far as law enforcement is concerned. And then on the homeless side, as far as the state is concerned, jurisdiction over the state, we are continuing to crack down on homelessness that is occupying state property. And so we are willing and able and ready to come behind the city on how they want to move on their encampments, on their property. But I'll leave that for the mayor's office or a council member to Paula's office to go ahead and weigh in on that. I do want to make a couple announcements. So the sirens, right now, the YNI coast has three inoperable sirens. I'm, I've been in contact with Haime. They're planning on fixing that by the end of the year, so please stand by. Also, their long-term goal is to really get some sirens in the valleys. When they were sounding the sirens, nobody could hear them. And so that's a very, very big problem for our homesteaders or just for our residents that live in the valley. We have kupuna in there. So it's important that they prioritize that, and they are. Pakia Road is still on schedule to open at the end of September. So that is still something that is ready to be open 24/7. And so we'll be able to get some relief. It's not gonna be a lot, but you know, continue to hang in there with us as we work on these projects, you know, piece by piece, to just continue to give us relief. Because obviously the state roads cannot keep up with the amount of population that's happening down here, but we are working on it. I will go ahead and open up for questions since I'm running out of time, but go ahead. Thank you.
Any questions from community for Senator Decourt? Please approach the mic.
Hi, my name is Edmund. I know when it comes to HPD, that's a city issue. But I know you touched on it last week about the police station, second floor. It's moving in the right direction of being operational. But I don't know if anybody noticed or know this. There's this actor named Dean Cain. He played Superman during the 90s. And he's 59 years old. He went on Fox News. He's the new poster boy. I'm an ICE agent, right? Because ICE removed their age cap, right? There's no age cap anymore. So the thing is, now that's gonna hurt or a new challenge for police department recruitment. Because why do I want to be a police officer when I got one body cam? I got a name on my, my chest. I got a badge. They can see my face, right? I can be ICE. Man, I come out with about, no worry about manslaughter. I could come out with another 35 guys out of transport vehicles like military. And nobody can even see who I am. I got no badges. I got only ICE on my body, right? And I, and I'm paid to kick ass, right? I'm paid to violate people's rights. So what? Oh, if they're a citizen, hey, so what? We'll send them to El Salvador and they'll figure that out later, right? So right now there's a challenge, right? People want, it looks hot to be ICE right now, right? So why do I want to become a police officer when I get, what is that? I get disciplined for beating, shooting someone who's beating up three officers, right? And that is not what somebody would want to be. And this is happening not only in Hawaii, but nationwide. So that's a big challenge that's now on its way.
Thank you. Any further questions from community for Senator Decourt?
Aloha, Kalaisaocearo. The question is, I know there's gonna be so much challenges in our community. What is your next step, positive move? You're hoping to make to assure our community is being heard. What is the next step you're hoping to make a move? To give the community the fate that they lost to gain their fate back? That is my question.
So I think my town hall was pretty evident on ensuring that the right people be in the room to hear our voices. And to make sure that it's not only me being the messenger, taking it back to the city, I mean, excuse me, taking back to the state, taking it back to Department of Agriculture, taking it back to OHA, taking it back to all of our state agencies. But it was important that these department heads hear the voices of our people for themselves, so they feel compelled to act. And so once that town hall was over, I cracked at it right away to make sure that we start creating solutions and plans to, whether it be mitigate our homeless capacity, increase our crime, our public safety, help our schools get the resources that it needs. That was another really, really big concern that came up on our town hall was just the facilities and the, yeah, in our public schools. So I think for sure, making sure that the people, like how our board member Jermaine said, you know, we want to, we want the decision makers there. And YNI should get the decision makers there. There's no reason why a second in command or a third in command or a fourth in command of any department should be coming over here to send the message back to the guy at the top. If people are ensuring that YNI is a priority, then they should be here and they should make the time to be here. The people that I had on the panel, they had last minute things come up, but they made the commitment to be there. They kept our word and I'm looking forward to working with them. So that's step one.
I just want the community to know and the board to know. That was a good town hall. And those top officials didn't have to come to our community. But they took the time because we reached out to them, each and every one of them, to work with our legislature. Because we wanted answers that we could not have for years. And we all know, come on, let's be realistic. But they were there. You could have asked them questions. You know, your concerns, you could have brought it. So I'm very grateful to have this legislature and our representatives working together. We asked for the change. We fought for the change. Now we gotta work with them, not against them. We gotta give them the benefit of the doubt. We gotta move forward to make sure from Kaihena Point to Kaihi Point, the whole 96792 is being heard. I got, I found my smile, like I said. I'm gonna hang on to it and no one is gonna take it away. Because you know what? I earned that smile because she was part of the reason that gave the smile. My community was part of the reason gave me that smile. Duke's Law was part of the reason. And safety is a big issue. We all want help. But we gotta help ourselves. At the same time, remember, we need to help our kupunas, our loved ones. So benefit is the doubt. We got a right-hand person. Let's work with aloha and find a pono we all deserve. Pono in a 96792. Mahalo.
Mahalo. We have a question online. Please unmute with Johnny May Perry.
Thank you, Chair. Johnny May Perry. Senator, President Trump signed an executive order addressing the homeless, which will remove the homeless from public spaces who may have mental illness. Mental illness or not, with or without the consent, will be removed from public spaces. I'm not sure if it's gonna trickle down to Hawaii. But if it does, will you support that measure? Thank you.
Yeah, as soon as the information had become public, I already contacted the governor's office for this emergency order because it's important that when we get an emergency order like that, that comes down from a federal level, it also comes with federal funds. And so we here on the coast are dealing with the homeless population that continues to grow and continues to increase. So I know on the state side, I can't speak for the city side, but on the state side, the state is willing to work with the president in order to carry out this emergency order with the funding that it's gonna take. Now, the governor is very clear on where Nanakuli stands with Kahales. I've made that very known to his office. He also has heard the message loud and clear from here. So I'm hoping that he can absorb the funds and use it in a way that helps to provide resources, whether it be for mental health, whether it be for housing, whatever it is, to make sure that we reclaim our public spaces again. With or without consent, you shouldn't just be staying on our public parks, building, you know, all kinds of pallets on there, shacks. I mean, it's, it's one thing after the other. There's a full-blown gym up there. There's like a punching bag and everything. So I mean, this is where it's really getting bad. And the community that's living there is just there, they're just, they're just taking advantage of it. So I know on the state side that the governor's office is looking into it and how we can implement that. But we don't have a lot of homeless encampments that are on state property. The only one that is, is at the boat harbor and they're gonna be moving up Maoka in November. So other than that, I'm, I'm really hoping that both the state and the city would be able to take advantage of that. But that's for the city's attorneys to look at. I can only speak on behalf of the state.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Board member Hector, board member Asinsin, board member Maya.
Hi, thank you for such a good job so far. It takes, as they say, you know, reference a village, but it takes the community to get on board. And with people coming up, talking about the homeless, we're having to do going YNI and back. And even so, my friend that lived in the front, had his car stolen twice, you know? And the thing about it is not everybody can do what I did, take my brother off, take a cousin off. And they're, they're not skilled to deal with what challenges they have because of their choices, which is drugs. But if there is funds out there to really, even the law for getting them in mental health, they literally have to sign themselves in. So our, their hands are tied, our hands are tied, where mental health is concerned. But how is the drugs coming in? Why are they still on drugs? It's not endemic to the island, so something has to give. And my one nephew that had property, the family took it away because he mentally, he couldn't manage all the bills and everything. But I see him walking on the street sad, but I can't take everybody and we can't save everybody. But we can when we feed the churches. Thank God that the churches are getting involved. But it's a big deal. So any way we can help too with that, then put us to work.
And thank you for mentioning that because it's not for a lack of a place to go. We have shelters, we have facilities, we have rehab centers. I mean, i- i- it's not like these people are in our public spaces because there's nowhere to go. Like there's places to go, they're just refusing to go. So to implement the emergency order, I think would be a good step forward to observe, absorb those funds. Number one, number two, showing the presence of my town hall was really, it, it, it spoke volumes to the state departments to know that YNI is activated. Like we're not just in our own homes, you know, like doing nothing and just, you know, going internet crazy. But you guys show up and that is the biggest way that somebody in my position can go to the state departments and demand resources and demand support is because you guys will show up. And that's the most important thing, that my advocacy is backed by real-time presence and real-time support. And, and I will definitely take, let you folks know when it really is time to mobilize. But the, the presence at the town hall showed that YNI is activated. So let's just come to the table and just like give us what we need, you know? So this way we don't have to, you know, come knock at your door in your office. Like we'll stay in our lane, you stay in yours, but do your job and we'll do ours. And so I think for our community, if everybody can, you know, just take care of your kupuna, take care of your family. I think if everybody just kind of, you know, make sure we know where our kids are at. We know if they're getting in trouble. We know if they're, you know, hanging around the wrong crowd, those kinds of things. You know, then we can be responsible for that. But right now we're finding that, you know, whose kuliana is it? Is it their kuliana? Is it his kuliana? Is it our kuliana? You know, because we can only do so much at the end of the day. But I do know that the churches are mobilizing and they are helping. And this is exactly what we need. We are on the road to success and we are on the road to progress because everybody is doing their part. And even if that's just you managing your own home, keeping your kids in check, making sure everybody gets home, nobody's hanging around with the wrong crowd, then again, that's a step forward. So thank you for that, board member. I appreciate that. I'll let you guys know when it's time to mobilize.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Decourt, for the town hall too. What I appreciated about that is a different, especially DOE. We don't have a platform here, like that was probably the only platform that we've had to address DOE. I hope to see that more often, including DOE. And that also includes the houselessness because I believe DOE has a part, especially with the MVA, right? The McKinney-Vento Act, there's things that they could do. I like how community member Uncle George Grace brought up is the ants. I think, I think all of our elected officials do great. But I'd like to see everyone come together on our side, like all of the West Side. And this is not to point fingers. I think everyone's doing great. But how can we have a platform where all of our But how can we have a platform where all of our representatives, our senator, our councilwoman, all sit at the table with us? And we discuss plans for future, right? Because it can be, it can come across as everyone wants to do their own thing. But really we have to get in alignment to make these things happen. So first question is, do you plan to have more and specifically like that, where there's many at the, the platform? But also incorporating or inviting all of the elected officials or encouraging them? And I know schedules and stuff like that don't necessarily always. But I think that's really important. If we can have something like that where all of our elected official, officials are in it. Because it's hard, right? When we ask a question, oh, that's the cities or vice versa, city, that's the state. We get that, but there's a missing, missing link. So how can we make that happen? Big ask, but I'm asking it here of all of our elected officials, I think, to see if we can make that happen so we can see improvement on the West Side.
Yeah, it's not a hard ask, actually. It's, it's easy. We'll send out an invitation tonight and try to coordinate schedules with state and city. I'm not sure if you're wanting to include federal, but we can definitely send out an email and see when we can all get together. Will I be having more of those? There's nothing in the works right now because we got a lot of what we needed and where we need to head moving forward. What I don't want to do is redirect the community's efforts to just come and, you know, of course, you know, share concerns because anybody, you know, you guys, whether you're in this room, you're watching online or you're watching the recording, you guys can call my office anytime. You don't have to wait for a town hall. You don't have to wait until you run into me in the community. Like if you have an issue, like call me. But I do agree with all of the legislators getting together. So we'll send out an email. We, I am planning on updating the community with what we already have at the town hall because that's a lot. Like there's so much going on with crime, with homelessness, with DOE. So I'm gonna need time on my end to work with those agencies to make sure like we bring you guys back results. And it's not just like piling up one thing after the other. And so, but please don't wait for a town hall. Call me if you need me and then we can get the ball rolling on something. Because what you have, your concern is, is, is more than likely something that we're kind of either already working on or there's other people's concern. So whether you email me, Edmund calls me all the time, my office loves talking to you. You know, but, but yeah, but please, but please don't wait. And Kimo will definitely connect, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we address everybody's issue. But, you know, thank you guys for your patience in this because these things, although, you know, we have been waiting for a long time, it, it takes a while. And I'm not saying that to be passive or to put it off or, oh, I'm working on it. But, you know, just know that I'm always accessible if you need an update. If I have something for you, I have. If not, if not. But I think for sure Department of Education is gonna be, another, is an agency that I'm continuing to ask for reporting, continuing to ask for data, continuing to ask for updates. So just gonna have to find another way. But yeah, thank you.
Remember Myers?
Thank you Chair. Thank you Senator. Sorry, we couldn't attend the, your town hall. Myself, Valerie and Uncle Paul were all at Firewise, which was very important to all of us. I thought I had three minutes, not two. Oh.
Bro, she chats.
Okay, so speak fast. The homeless on the beaches is the city issue, but the park, because when they're on parks. But there is a state issue as far as providing sufficient housing. And so the last governor that provided sufficient housing for the homeless along the Yainai coast was Linda Lingo. Governor Egan did nothing and so far it's been slow with Governor Green. The sirens are state. We already bought that up last year. Princess Kahano Siren, still not working. Okay, but in Senate District, fifty thousand, Senate, your Senate District, fifty thousand population. So it includes all of Yainai, which brings me to my next thing. Farrington Highway, when it was shut down for the tsunami warning, that's state. Okay, but then of course HPD is city that makes sure that everybody gets off the coastline. Evacuation site, we have one and one and only for all of nine six seven nine two, for fifty thousand people to evacuate to, which is Nanakuli High, an intermediate school. The problem is when Farrington Highway was shut down, none of the Red Cross could come to the, the shelter in order to make it sufficiently open if we did have a tsunami. I bring these things up because Firewise is trying to address fires, which we're in the hot summer months right now. It's getting hotter. Hurricane season is from June first to November thirtieth. So when I'm hearing you tell me that the siren is not gonna get fixed till December, why? We bought that up last year. One of the things that we learned from another community member, which, which was Catherine Kamada, was when the siren went down in Yainai, it was because the homeless people were going up there, disengaging it because it's along the shoreline and they don't want to hear the sirens once a month blaring them to wake it up or whatever. So they were disengaging it. So the solution was to get a cherry picker to make it further higher up where they can't climb it. And it would be further higher up, meaning the siren, to get them out of range to be disengaged. So what is the problem with Ha'ima fixing our sirens?
Yeah, so good point because I have been bringing this up before I got elected when I was a chair of the neighborhood board. And, you know, whatever their excuse is, is completely unacceptable, right? But those three sirens are the one by St. John's Row, Lahi-Lahi, and then out at Kahena. So it-
Princess Kahano.
Yeah, 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 Princess Kahano. Yeah, so Princess Kahano, Lahi-Lahi, and Kahena. Yeah, sorry, not St. John's Row. That's the one that got fixed. That's Kamada's one. But, but yeah, so I'll pitch it back to Ha'ima to prioritize our sirens being that if I date it back probably two years ago already, that I've been asking them since I was the chair of the neighborhood board over here. So I'll go back to the table and ask them to, there was a lot of confusion. Sorry, so let me just move on to the tsunami with the Farrington Highway being closed. There was a lot of confusions with the schools that were opening. This is why I am a little bit more short with Department of Education than I should be is because the lack of communication to open up the schools, it took longer than it needed to. Nanakuli High School and then also Le Hoku, right, in Yainai. So that was a school that most of the community knows. But again, I'm working with DOE to have a quicker response to make sure Le Hoku was open. And so Farrington Highway that was being closed, obviously because we're so close to the ocean. But I think that we learned how we could do things better, getting the word out, letting people know when it's open, when it's closed. Even Kole Kole Pass, you know, I'm, I'm working with DOT because they didn't tell us when it was closed. They only told us it was open. So I didn't find out it was closed till community was telling me, oh my gosh, it's closed. And I had to call Army, then they told us it was closed. So, so we are wa- working on our communication. So I apologize to the community about that. It's something that we're continuing to strengthen. But I am happy that Kole Kole Pass was an access road going out of Yainai. We are gonna be doing another run with the community. I'll let you know when that is next year, about April, March time, to see how many more cars as an exercise can go through Kole Kole Pass and just do a run-through, just do a test run. So Department of Education, I mean, sorry, Department of Transportation, we're working on making sure that we do a greater run. But from what I heard to the people that did use that road, they seem to have a good, like, experience. Like it was well, people were, you know, patiently going, nobody was beeping their horns, Army was very nice. So, but again, it's definitely an area that we have to strengthen communication. And I think that that is gonna be, making sure that it gets out to the news. But also seeing how we can get it through social media and through other platforms.
Can you get us in writing what is Ha'ima's problem with fixing the sirens? Because they have over four hundred sirens statewide. And it seems like parts come in and it goes to another community siren that never seems to get broken down. But ours along the coastline keep being ignored as far as being fixed. It's, uh, it's the infrastructure. It's, what is the state's budget for fixing or making sure that there's sufficient monies to Ha'ima for the sirens? Because it's the first line and only line of defense for all of us, community members to know we've got a natural disaster, we got a man-made disaster, evacuate your community. So Kuniya today had the fire. Did the sirens go off? Let them know. But they're along, they're inland. We are along the coastline. We're affected by the ocean. And then of course, we're in the area where it's, the mountain and the ocean is so close in proximity that a fire in the mountain affects us. So I wanna know from, really from Ha'ima, is the legislature, you guys not giving them sufficient funds? Or is it just poor management? And who, who can get involved? The governor should get involved when it comes to do, cannot keep pushing down excuses after excuses. And our community and our neighborhood boards specifically have been talking about this for years already. Catherine Kamada brought it up two elections ago. This neighborhood board is, it's just got elected and started their term in July. We were already knowing about this back when Pariet Kanamokuturuya was on the board, where community members came and sat in the seats and told us, this is a problem for our community. I'm tired of hearing, oh, the part's coming. So please, can we get that stopped already and all be green?
Thank you.
Mahalo.
I will, I will. And I will say, just to wrap up this conversation, that it's not for lack of money, Ha'ima has it. So I will implore them to prioritize Yainai.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, anything else to share?
Okay, well, my final announcement, I just wanted to say, oh, bittersweet. With a heavy heart, I shared an update with my office, with regards to my office. I just wanted to let community know that today was Malia's last day with my office. She has resigned and she will be taking care of her two little ones, homeschooling them, which, God bless you, we will keep you in prayer. But, you know, I just really want to share that, you know, Malia has been a pillar in my office and she really has been the backbone. And not only has brought Aloha, she has brought Ho'oponopono. And she really represented Nanakuli very, very strong. And I know that she is continuing to advocate on a community level. So she knows, she continues to have full access to my office. But please don't send her any more emails and please don't ask, don't pull her to the side. You know, just, that's what Nia, hi Nia, that's Nia, everybody. But I just wanted to, you know, update the community that Malia has been nothing but a blessing to me. And I had shared with her that anywhere she goes, wherever she decides to go after the kids get situated, I'd be more than happy to write a letter of support or even make a phone call to just really encourage whatever direction she wants to go in, that somebody better snatch this girl up. Because I'm telling you, like, when she goes, when she's committed, girlfriend is like, she's targeted and she's going full force. So I just wanted to say, Chair Guston, it was a blessing to have you in my office. Be, you know, myself, Nia Bronson, my family, Tommy, my, my boys, Jordan, Inoan, Elijah, we mahalo you. We thank you. We know that you felt compelled to serve in this capacity from your kupunas and from the Lord. And I know that God is going to take you to even a greater level. So I wanted to mahalo you and thank you for your family and for the community standing by her in this time. And now she is being promoted to, to being with her family and with her children, where Malia never wavered in her commitment to her family. That was always first and she always kept that first. And so I love you and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have State Representative Darius Keela on virtual.
Mahalo board, mahalo chair. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I got stuck with dinner duty for the family. So I do, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time. I, I would like to just thank all our first responders for the amazing work that they did in the July tsunami evacuation. As you folks know, we did have a scheduled town hall that evening, but what are the odds that it was for Department of Transportation? Because a lot of the things that we worked on that they regarded transportation. So I do want to thank everyone that partook in that, that situation. And we've definitely heard some concerns and some ways for improvement. But I, I will always say, if that's our worst, I can't wait to see what we do at our best. I, I thought it was great getting five hundred cars through Kole Kole, working with all of our legislators that evening to make sure that we were in consistent communication with the community. And I will always do our, I will do my best to make sure that folks have the most up-to-date information that they possibly can to make sure that they can make safe and smart decisions. Tomorrow I will be with the library. If you folks can join me. We will be bringing the National Institute for Criminal Justice Forum. They commissioned a sixty-page comprehensive overview of how really the judicial system works with, with youth and other access to mental health and services. They wanted to come specifically to the Nanakuli community because a lot of the data that they surveyed was from the West Side of Oahu. And I thought this was a great opportunity for folks to see the data, to make their own opinion on what we can and do better or what needs to change. We did reschedule Department of Transportation to come back in September. Sorry, let me pull up the date. And in lieu of also rescheduling them, September tenth, we'll be back at the library. We're actually also hosting Department of Transportation Services. As you folks know, at the last meeting, I talked to you about their trannication of skyline routes. I did ask them to do a formal presentation to the community on what their plans are with the skyline as it relates to the bus service. So if you don't have any bus riders on the Yainai side, I would please ask that you just share with them to come to September tenth to hear directly from DTS on what they're trying to do with the skyline operations. And then DOT will be there as well. And then on September twenty-fifth, we'll be having the DHHO Resource Fair at the Ma'ili Commitment Learning Center. They will be having their staff for everything that possibly could occur, whether it's lease, application, beneficiary concern. And then we will get an update from the department there. And as of right now, that's the updates I have for you folks and I'd be willing to take any questions.
Mahalo Rep Keela. Appreciate you joining us. Any questions from the community for Rep Keela?
Hi, my name is Edmund. Good evening, Representative Keela. Get some good news. The Pa'akea Road will be opening sometime in, in part of September, maybe October. Yeah, I'm gonna be this guy that rains on the parade. Okay, so anticipate, right, that Pa'akea Road because there's no residents there. I mean, the bypass is gonna be just like the current Pa'akea Road. There's gonna be illegal dumping. Right? And because I seen sort of what the road bank look like, there's gonna be a long straightaway there, right? So yeah, anticipate drag racing on that road. Okay, so again, without much lighting, right? Again, seclusion, yeah. We, it's just, things not gonna go well there when the, when the sun goes down. So maybe I'm wrong. Hopefully, just want to clue you in.
Chair May provide a response?
Yes.
Edmund, thank you. I do want to share that the reason we actually haven't opened the road yet is because when DOT took jurisdiction of the road with the work of the county, I do, and I think board member Myers brought up the concern. It's not just opening the gates twenty-four seven. It does involve making sure that the road is accessible. And it will involve speed tables and speed humps to, to totally discourage the speeding. And from my understanding, lighting is to be put in. And I also just want to clarify, it is the connection road from Lululela Naval to Pa'akea, not Pa'akea in its full self. The hope is in the next year or two that DOT will be able to take on the jurisdiction of the Pa'akea Road in its entirety. But as of right now, really, the intent is for the connection of the bypass road. So I don't want to get folks, I want to get folks excited, but I also don't want that, that be not clear on what, what part is opening. But I do appreciate you bringing that up, Edmund.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I should understand it connects the naval road to the intersection of Hakimaru and Pa'akea. But because it's a new road, right, that blacktop is nice and smooth. It is so ideal for burning rubber and falling ass. Let me tell you, if I was still in, when I was, you know, I was twenty, yeah, I'll be driving that road as soon as it opens.
Thank you. And just for, for our time's sake, I'm gonna ask that from here on, we just have one question per person. Thank you.
Well, I had two, but I was narrowed down to one for you.
For you, Representative Keela, tomorrow night's meeting, we'll be addressing some judicial matters. Please familiar yourself on House Bill 103 that got signed in June 3rd relating to sentencing. This affects how you treat 21 years and under who commits a felony. Shoots a judge, shoots a politician, shoots HPD law enforcement, it'll lessen their criminal prosecution towards them to barely maybe 10 years or less. So there'll be significant impact on how this new law that had gotten signed into law is billed. House Bill 103, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Rep Keela? Board Member Myers, Board Member Delacruz, Board Member Essenson.
Just a quick comment, Rep Keela. I'll try to work with you offline with regards to the Siren. I just wanted to make it, recognize and acknowledge that the Siren issue started with Senator Mili Shimubukuro and also the representative prior to you coming into office as well. And you were able to help us when our board took the stance that we were gonna, we made a motion that it needed to be completed by a specific date within 30 to 60 days. It was done through your office. So I'm hoping that we can get Princess Kahano's, because again, it involves having a cherry picker, et cetera. But we'll work with Senator Decourt as well as with you, because it is Haima and it's a state agency. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Myers.
Board Member Delacruz.
Aloha, Rep. I have a question regarding something that you had brought up previously a couple months ago, in regards to our water wells, there were forever chemicals in it. I have not received or heard anything of that update, if there is any, for myself as well as the community to know in that regards. I don't know if the departments had changed with previous staffing or whatnot, but I'd like to hear an update in that regards, because I believe you also yourself was unaware and had brought it up within our board meeting. And also, another thing was that online, there were issues of houselessness, animals that are chasing away community people. Is there anything that you work with, the 501(c)(3) people, that you can come up with and assist with the housing, houseless, and also the community to address that situation?
Okay, Chair, the two questions. If BWS is on, I would ask that they could provide that update, because they were the ones that did the monitoring while reporting of the PFAS that was reported. And from my understanding, the reason it wasn't even reported was because it was such a low level. But the position I had was that any level of PFAS should always be recorded for the sake of transparency and health for the community. So if BWS could either, if they're on, if they could answer, but if not, I'll make sure to circle back with BWS and I'll circle to Chair to see what response that can be given. And to your second comment regarding the online comments regarding the unhoused folks with animals, I have an email thread with that individual and I've asked the individual to provide a statement and comment to the law enforcement folks on that email. And I've yet to get a response from the individual. And to that point, the HPD and law enforcement, they will always ask for the folks' cooperation because we cannot, I don't know how to say this, in, in order for a crime to be prosecuted or something to be brought forward, it has to be brought forward by a party. But largely, the humane society is aware of the animals that are out there and they send officers when they can to try to help get, relieve some of the animals. At the last cleanup that we did with Councilmember Tubola, we did, we did remove a few animals from the area, but largely their animals are still persisting. The problem we're running into, and I will say this frankly to the community, is that we have one part of our community that is very wanting to see change in how we treat them, unhoused folks. And then anytime we do change on, on housed folks, we get blasted. And I'm not saying that no one side is wrong or no one side is right, but I've continuously tried to find a path forward. And every path we go, somebody does not like the way we're doing the things. But I, I think that everyone can agree that we want some sense of openness. But to a lot of the comments that were raised, it's been on our county parcels, but the state is involved in that. I don't want folks to not know, because when the county does not have the appropriate staff to clean up the trash, we have our state workers assisting with that. So it is a collaborative effort. And I think the larger issue we're trying to face is as we've done targeted enforcement, we don't want folks going into areas that they put themselves in danger harm, such as the reef. And it has been made very clear that we need the Department of Land and Natural Resources to collaborate closely with the Honolulu Police Department on all the store property ordinance enforcements. Galaho West Oahu is the service provider for District 8, and they do targeted outreach every single time we've asked them to. And they are doing, I think, everything they possibly can. And then another comment, I, I will share that executive orders are not law, they are directives, and there's no necessary legislative teeth behind that. And it's imperative onto the way that the county and the state will work with the executive order as issued. So that, that's just my comment to, or my response, Board Member Delacruz.
Thank you. Mahalo. Board Member Essenson.
Hi, Rep Keela. Thank you so much for all that you do for our community. I'm not sure if this question is for you or for DHHL or maybe both. There are some speed bumps on Sixth Road right now. I don't know where they came from or what, but it's, I mean, I just went through Third Road, there's nothing on Third Road. But it's almost like a, you don't even know it's gonna happen. And it's one of those where you can just damage your car, like even if you're going speed limit. So do you know anything about that? Or if that's plans to out?
Yeah, Board Member Essenson, that is an unsanctioned installed speed calming device that was not installed by the department or any state agency. And I highlights, I think, the, the parts where community are experiencing their concerns of speeding, but that is not a sanctioned device. And the only thing I would tell you is that whoever installed it, and if it is determined that they are the installer, can be held liable for damages. But it brings up a larger conversation of just trying to do speed calming within the homesteads. We finally got our speed humps down in Princess Kahano, and I know that there was concerns about the design. But I do want to let folks know that it was intentionally designed that way for emergency vehicles to safely enter and exit through the homestead community without having to be impacted. So that is not a sanctioned speed hump, Board Member Essenson. And the last time it was put down, it was removed. So I will flag that to our state agencies to remove the speed hump.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you so much, Rep Keela, appreciate your time.
Mahalo, Chair, and thank you for your service to the state. You will be missed. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next on our agenda, we have Department of Hawaiian Homelands, Representative Diamond Seeing none, moving on to our next Office of Hawaiian Affairs, CEO Stacy Ferreira in person. Thank you for making the trip.
Aloha, ai ai. Mahalo for having me. What a wonderful group you have that comes in and engages. And, you know, I, I saw it at the, at the town hall and I'm seeing it again tonight. And it's just really amazing to see beneficiaries who really care. And not just, you know, grumble, but actually come with solutions too. So that's amazing. And mahalo for your service. I know I have three minutes and look, I'm already, is that two already? Or you didn't start the timer?
I don't know. We'll start the timer at three. And we do have a-
DHHL yield their three minutes to me, I would so appreciate it. And if I don't finish in three minutes, hopefully one of your questions is what else do I have on my palapala to share? So I wanted to give you some updates on our budget that just passed three weeks ago. So we have a biennial budget right now that is about $136 million. And in this fiscal year, we tend, we're going to be spending about $70 million and in FY27, about $65 million. And I wanted to share with you some really important programs, services, and priorities that we're going to be focusing on in FY26. And please know that the things I'm sharing out tonight are, it's not an exhaustive list, but the ones that I really think the community should know about. And certainly, I will come back next month and continue to share additional program services and priorities. One of the ones that I think should be on your radar is our Hawaiian Kingdom Crown and Government Lands. And so this is also referred to as ceded lands, public land trusts. OHA, by constitution and state mandate, should be getting 20% of the public land trust funds. We get less than 5%. Now, by law, in Act 125 in 2000 and Act 54, again in 2011, we have two laws on the books already that require this, the executive branch to do a complete and accurate land inventory. To date, they have not done that. And so we know that as citizens, taxpayers, if we don't follow the law, there's a consequence, right? And so we will be holding, continue to hold the state of Hawaii accountable and responsible for what is already in law, which is that they need to provide this complete and accurate inventory. And I know that our Chair Emerita Hulu Lindsay is watching, and I just want to mahalo her and her leadership, because she has been heading the Public Land Trust Working Group. And we actually have some really positive news to report. And we have a new Speaker of the House, well, fairly new. She's had one session as the Speaker, Nadine Nakamura. And she has been very supportive of getting this land inventory done once and for all. And this is the first time that we've had this level of leadership at the legislature to commit to us to get this inventory done. And I've had meetings with Senator Decourt and mahalo for her support for the Public Land Trust bill that we put in last year. But we're coming again. And we're gonna continue to put pressure on the state. We're gonna work with the Speaker and with President Kochi and hopefully with representatives from the Senate. Because this will be the first time that we will have legislative representatives working alongside of OHA and the executive branch to move this land inventory forward once and for all. So keep that on your radar, because this is not just a Hawaiian issue. We need everybody in this state to care about what is a social injustice that is being done right now to Native Hawaiians. This is our fair share. This is our Hawaiian Kingdom Crown and Government Lands that all residents of Hawaii benefit from. So we need, we need that 20%, because that's what's gonna better the conditions of Native Hawaiians. We need to get those resources out to our people. The second thing that I wanted to share is that in our budget, over the next two years, we've committed to almost $3.5 million in direct legal services to our communities. So what does that mean? That means you can go to the Native Hawaiian Legal Court and they can provide legal services on child welfare issues, home evictions, land title issues. So if you're having some kind of issues that require legal support, please reach out to them, use this benefit. This is something that we want to provide to our communities across the Paiaina. One of the other things that we're gonna be funding this year in housing, we are going to be launching a Malama Honua Home Improvement and Renovation Program. So we want to be able to have beneficiaries come and get grant funds. So these are not loans, these are funds that you can request for home repairs. And it's really important for us that our kupuna can age in place. And we want to make sure that homes and the places that are keke are, are having to study in, and we want them to have safe places to sleep at night, that we can fix roofs and we can put, you know, glass in the windows and fix, fix the doors and have ramps for our kupuna to get in and out of homes. So if you know anybody or if you yourself need these home repairs, please be on the lookout. We will be launching these programs over the next month or two. We also have established an Access to Home Ownership Program, AHO. I have the handouts over there for you to take. And basically, this is to help our Kanaka get into a home and, and not have to worry about that down payment. That really is that biggest barrier for our people to, to have permanence here in this state. If we can't have stable housing, we're gonna end up moving. That's just the fact. Or what you see, you know, are folks either having to live with family members or they're living in, in their cars or at the beaches. And so please take advantage of these programs. Again, OHA is trying to be very innovative in how we can get resources in partnering. So in this particular case, we are partnering with American Savings Bank to make sure that we can make homeownership in Hawaii affordable. One of the other things that we're committing, continuing to commit to is giving $6 million over two years. So every two years, we give $3 million a year, but over the biennium, $6 million to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And this is to pay down their debt service, a $90 million debt service that was a loan that was taken out to provide infrastructure or to put in infrastructure across the Paiaina for various Hawaiian homesteads. So what does that look like in, in practice? That's roads, that's sewer lines, that's electrical lines. It's all of the basic infrastructure. OHA helps to pay down that debt, debt service so that DHHL can use their other funds to actually build the homes. So that's how we're, we're partnering very closely with them. I wanted to share in education, we are providing to Kauai Hona or Kanaka Oahu over a half a million dollars over the next two years. And we are also over a half a million dollars to Kamalei Academy. And we know that our Hawaiian-focused charter schools are underfunded continuously. And it's egregious in, in terms of the lack of permanence that they have with facilities and, you know, just the underfunding with their curriculum, funding for teachers. And so we want to make sure that our Hawaiian-focused charter schools get the resources that they need. I also wanted to share under some of our health programs, that last year, over the last fiscal year, OHA paid for a feasibility study through the Native Hawaiian Legal Court to look at instituting a Hawaiian specialty court. Now, you may be familiar that there's drug court, there's girls' court, there's all kinds of courts to, to try to address different types of issues that are happening, criminal issues, if you will, in our communities. And so we know that Native Hawaiians are overrepresented in our, in our prisons and in our jails. We are arrested at higher rates and we are also charged at higher crimes. And so part of the work that we're doing through our Manai Ma'uliola Strategic Plan and looking at this issue and trying to address it, is how do we create a judicial system that works for us, that looks at how we can look at it from a Native Hawaiian lens and a Hawaiian worldview? And so we did a feasibility study and we got a report back, and I'd be happy to share that with you the next time I come, that it is feasible. And we do have a judge, Judge Hall, who would be willing to sponsor and champion a Hawaiian cultural court. And this is gonna be a huge step forward in disrupting this pathway to prison for our Kanaka. And so what that will look like is basically starting to look at what a specialty court would need, what are the resources, what is the staffing? And so we will be moving forward and working very closely with the Native Hawaiian Legal Court, with the judiciary, to start to get this Native Hawaiian court stood up. In addition to that, we had our first Aha Pu'uulu, call them aye, Aha Pu'uulu, that was led by Kumuu Earl Kava'a. And basically, what he did was he convened kupuna practitioners from across the different islands, and we met at Keke Okaaina at the end of July. And this is to work in conjunction with the Hawaiian court. So we know that our kupuna, our Wana, would never give our, our keke away. And we would never let somebody just take them from our homes. And so what we want to do is go back to our traditional practice of having our elders be able to help inform, help advise, and provide guidance about if we do have one of our children that are in jeopardy or in some kind of danger, how can our kupuna help advise this Native Hawaiian specialty court on what those next steps should be? Who our keke should be entrusted with? Who are those family members or extended family members or even those within the immediate community that our keke are familiar with? How can we service them better through this kupuna council? So there's lots of different things that we're trying to do to disrupt the pathway to prison, to ensure that we can decrease the number of Native Hawaiian keke and child welfare, because we are overrepresented in that as well. And so these are some of the steps that OHA is taking. And again, I'm just giving you sort of the, the high-level overview, but I would love to come back at a, a later date and really dig a little bit deeper with a presentation to share more about these efforts. Lastly, I'm just gonna also share with you, we have a Kukulu Kahua Emergency Financial Assistance Program. So we have about $1.5 million that we've committed to this, and I have the flyer here. And if you or you know somebody that needs emergency financial assistance that can be used for rent, utilities, funeral expenses, car or home repairs, please take advantage of this program. Again, this is offered statewide. Again, this is offered statewide. And I will end on, we do care about what you want the legislature to hear and how OHA can be that advocate for you at the, at this upcoming session. If you go to oha.org, you will see there's a Hi Hawaii picture with the capital. And if you click on that, it'll provide you a very, very short survey. It won't take you very long. But tell us, what is it that you would like us to bring forward and advocate for you folks at the legislature during the upcoming session? So I heard, I heard about sirens. I think that's a great bill that should be brought forward that prioritizes high-risk areas that have one way in, one way out. If anything is going to get fixed, it could probably be those. And so how do we create bills that force them to do this? And not just wait for, wait for them to figure out how to get around to it? But there are other things that I heard tonight that might be really good legislative bills. So please take the survey, just a few minutes. Let us know what you'd like and how we can best advocate for you. Mahalo Nui, appreciate the time.
Mahalo. Lots of good updates. We appreciate the, the updates for our community, especially being the largest Native Hawaiian community in this state. So I, I'd like to open up for questions from the community. Again, just one question per person. Seeing none, any questions from the board? Board Member Myers, Board Member Asinsin, Tector and Dela Cruz.
Aloha Chair, thank you Chair. Aloha Kapahana.
Aloha Jermaine.
Thank you for your, your report to us. It was really informative for many of us. And then, and I do encourage everyone to take the survey for the legislator to get behind OHA as far as what are the initiatives we're interested in. I just wanted to bring to you one request.
Okay.
And it came up because Uncle Paul, he's part of the Nanakuli Cemetery. And I was going through the minutes from January and I saw that he had presented DHHL a request for $50,000 per year to take care of Nanakuli Cemetery. And so prior to this request, community members have been taking care of the cemetery. And most of them are retired community members, no compensation. But we have infrastructure issues like the, the trash and the toilet, the haleluia that's on the property, et cetera. So they're asking DHHL for $50,000. There are only two cemeteries on DHHL's lands in the entire state of Hawaii that we can put our ancestors in for no cost when they pass away. And so that's Hoolehuamaloka'i and Nanakuli Cemetery, two cemeteries. So I hear a lot of issues that come up at OHA when I attend OHA meetings. Evi kupuna, we want money to go get evi kupuna that is desecrated or potentially desecration in Hawaii Kai or in, on different islands. Or even OHA spending money to send people to bring back evi kupuna. Well, these are our bones right there in our cemeteries. Is it possible for OHA to, like collaborate with DHHL to come up with that $50,000 each year? Because I see event monies being given, 25,000, 30,000, 50,000, 5,000. But just once a year, can OHA potentially provide 25,000? DHHL provide 25,000 in order to fund this $50,000 request by the kupunas? That's just one for maintaining, et cetera, throughout the year that they've kind of put a dollar on. But we're going through the fire wise. And Nanakuli Cemetery get a lot of kiave trees. I'm hoping those kiave trees can be replaced because they're fire trees, right? Like they burn wood. So if an ember came from the, the mountain, from a fire, wildfire in the mountain, which we had one recently, and, you know, with those trees, you know, they would become a hazard to the community. So I'm just looking at that as another potential project in the cemetery. So is that possible or is that something for the next biennium?
Yeah. Mahalo for the question and more importantly, ana kala, Paul, mahalo for your malama of our evi kupuna. You know, evi kupuna is a priority for our board. It's in our executive policies and we take the care of our evi seriously, as we should, all of us. What we're doing right now is having broader conversations around evi kupuna. Because I think we've focused quite a bit on repatriation, which we need to do. The lack of humanity that has been shown to our evi kupuna that had been stolen or sold and taken to other, other countries on, on the continent. I mean, these are people's ohana. These are their fathers, their grandmother, there's babies. And they're put in boxes and put on display. And these are, these are human beings, right? And so repatriations have been a huge priority for us to, to bring our, our evi kupuna back and let me a kapu as well. But we also have to realize that we have coastal erosion that is happening across the Paiaina, which is uncovering many, many thousands of evi kupuna. We have development that is just at an all-time high and evi kupuna are being disrupted from pol, right? So we have to think much more broadly and much more holistically about how OHA is going to malama evi kupuna. Because we're going to have to think about, one, how do, how do we preserve and protect those that are already with pol? And then how those that are getting desecrated and disrupted? And how do we address that through compliance? Because I'm telling you with cesspool conversion, and maybe this is something that I can, I can talk more with Senator Decourt about. But I'm worried, I'm worried about our rural communities who have to do these conversions that are $50,000 plus, right? But anytime you put in a cesspool, you're digging. And every time there's digging, you have high probability you're going to disturb evi, right? And if you don't do your cesspool conversion, you're going to get a fine. So we have lots of issues around evi kupuna. And so OHA really needs to take a much more global view on evi and how we're going to malama our kupuna. The other thing too is education, right? And how are we, how are we incorporating that into our plans of malama evi kupuna? And not being afraid to talk about birth and death and that, that cycle of life with our keke? Because we need to teach them early on how to care for our evi kupuna. Because once our, our current kupuna are gone, we're going to need that next generation. So there's a lot of things Jermaine that we're talking about right now. Again, in how do we think about evi kupuna in a much more comprehensive way than just repatriations or one-off projects that are, you know, are, you know, are desecrating our evi kupuna? But what is our overarching plan going to be? And how do we resource that? But I will keep that in mind. I'm going to put a note to myself that part of that overarching plan needs to be partnering with DHHL on those two cemeteries because that's important as well. And I will tell you that we, we should have a cemetery, a place to inter our evi in every moku. You know, we need to have places where folks who cannot afford Oahu Cemetery or Milanani Mortuary to be able to be buried with dignity. So that, that's also part of the conversation. Mahalo.
Mahalo. So I'm going to have our board members each ask their questions. We'll hold on the answers for now. If each of you can state your question and we'll get a short answer, but we'll get the answer answered by email and follow through that way.
Can do.
Okay. Thank you. Just for consideration of time, we have a couple more members present to share. So go ahead, Board Member Asinsin.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I know that you said you're assisting Kamile and Kauaihona, big advocate for Nanakuli High and Intermediate School, the high school on the Hawaiian homeland. Is there something that you can assist us with? I have my last two children there, seventh generation of Hawaiian homestead. And we could use a lot of assistance up there. So if you could please put that in consideration to assisting.
The name of the school?
Nanakuli High and Intermediate School.
Mahalo.
Board Member Tector. You mentioned that you're not getting the full percentage of what OHA deserves. So is there a plan to get us involved? Because when we did the names, like I signed up.
The Hawaiian registry.
Correct. You have all of that, you have enough of that. So what's the next step to getting OHA what they deserve?
Mahalo.
So just let us know and then if you can.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Board Member Dela Cruz.
I just had a question and regarding to judiciary platform. You mentioned a Judge Hall?
Judge Hall.
How many judges you have in the OHA?
In OHA?
Yeah.
No, we don't have judges, we don't have a judiciary. That's the judicial branch. Judge Hall is with the judicial branch.
How many out there, if you would know? You don't.
I don't know how many judges offhand. Yeah, they have different circuit courts and yeah, there's many.
Judge Hall is with the Supreme?
I want to say she's the, you know, I, I'll get back to you. I don't want to misspeak.
Okay, any further questions from the board for OHA? Thank you so much.
Mahalo.
We appreciate you.
Ana kala.
Board Member Ayo.
Would OHA be willing to buy land? And the land that I'm talking about is right here at Lululea Lake. It's across from, it's across from PVT. He said it had 200 acres. He had 200 acres available. That, that's only a question. You don't have to answer it. We can talk later.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you so much for your time and making time to come out here. We look forward to having OHA here every month on our regular agenda. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda, we have Mayor Rick Bongiardi's representative, who is not able to present this evening. An email will be sent out to each board member with an update until they reestablish a representative for this board. Next on our agenda, we have Councilmember Andrea Tupola online. No online. Represent, representation here with Kika.
Oh, she just logged back on.
She's logging on.
Hi, aloha Chair. Aloha board members.
Joining us virtually.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my office did email over a few bills that we're working on. Today, we actually had a briefing on the Maile Fire. So Kika brought a couple copies if you guys wanted, but it's also available online. All of the departments presented, including the Department of Education and HEICO, about their response times, things that they're going to try to improve. I did submit all the questions from the board to each of the departments from last month's hearing. So they're going to give that to you written. And then also tomorrow in the 1:00 International Legal and Affairs meeting, I'll be having a resolution heard that I introduced regarding an audit of COR and HESD. And this is in regards to the effectiveness of some of the homeless outreach they do. And I know that was a topic here tonight. So if you want to weigh in on that, that'll be tomorrow at 1:00. I also have another resolution being heard at 1:00 in Public Safety on Thursday. That's regarding the Police Commission not derating more than the end of this year to choose the new Chief of Police, as well as making sure to get input from the rank and file. And then at the 2:30 hearing in Government Efficiency, I will also be having a bill heard, Bill 5. I've been working with the Cattlemen and Ranchers Association to craft what we need for stray animals. And this is not what the Humane Society does. So this has to do with cattle and goats and everything else that's outside of dogs, cats and chickens, which is what we give to the Humane Society for their contract. All of that to be said, I do have a cleanup this Saturday. We're going to be leveling out the brush at the Sea Country Community Park. And I want to thank Pride Softball for adopting the park and as well leading the charge on this. Anybody can come out, we'll be out there this Saturday. And then as well, on August 30th, I'll be doing another cleanup at Lahili. And this is in the mountain area. I'll be partnering with Malama Rising if people want to join for that. I have more information on my social media, but you can always call my office for details, 768-5001, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the community for Representative, Councilmember Tupola?
Hello Andrea, this is Austin. What is the, uh? What is the status of the pound master that you and Tyler DeSantos tam?
Thank you. Yeah, that's at the hearing on, on Thursday at 2:30. So it's the pound master bill, Bill 5. This is the one we've been waiting for.
Okay, can we provide the supportive testimony and how do it?
Yes, please. I would really love supportive testimony. We do need a pound master. We need somebody that's going to help when animals go stray. So I would appreciate a testimony and support.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And any questions from the board? Board Member Myers.
Thank you Chair. Aloha Councilmember Tupola, mahalo for coming to our meeting this evening. One thing I'm asking on behalf of the Transportation Committee. We had met June 30th, 20th from your office to address the WCEAR MOU. And so just asking on behalf of our committee, what is the status of the MOU for us to review and provide our feedback? And then how is the city going to handle the expiration of the current MOU, which expires on August 31st? Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member. I'll get back to you via email because we had the Maile Fire and then we had the tsunami. And then I actually had them debrief everyone sitting on both of those in my committee hearing. I did ask them for a follow-up on that MOU and they are still working on it. But I do think it's because of the most recent emergencies that we've had. But I do know that the date is to get it done in August. So Board Member Myers, if you will allow me, I will follow up with them. But there was a fire again in Kunia today. So everybody actually left to go address that fire that was happening, as well as the director. But that doesn't mean that we can't work on this MOU. So I'm kind of pushing, if you remember, Ms. Walters, she works for DEM. So I'm trying to push her along to make sure that we can get this done. And I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Can we have a monthly debriefing from you as far as an email from your staff on the first of the month? Because we meet on the first Thursday of the month. But I'm hoping to be able to have it on our committee to agendize for us to.
Okay.
Keep the thing moving along.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah, we can do that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tupola. We appreciate you joining us this evening and seeing your face virtually and Kika here in person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Board of Water Supply Kathleen Pahinui. Thank you for waiting so patiently and joining us in person.
Very interesting. I passed out a copy of the report, so I won't go through it in respect of everybody's time and community. There are also copies up here if you'd like to get it. But the gist is we did have three main breaks up here last month. Just want to bring you guys up to date on several projects that we're working on out here. First one is the YNI Moku Designation Update. I think some of you are, we presented to you in the past. It was accepted by the Commission on Water Resource Management a couple of months ago. Actually, probably more than that by now. We're still waiting for them to schedule a public hearing here in the community. We're not sure when that's going to be. Jonathan Shoyer, who some of you know, is going to be checking with them to find out when that presentation is going to be. If there's anybody on the board, I know you have some new members that would like a briefing, we're more than happy to do it. I handed out my card earlier tonight. Please call me or email me and I'd be happy to schedule one with Jonathan for you. The YNI Watershed Management Plan. Board Member Myers asked me when a draft would be ready. As all good plans, our dates have slipped a little bit. So right now, we're looking at holding our second community meeting sometime in September, October, I believe. And then based on that, on the schedule that we have on our website, I would expect that we would have our first public draft. And I am sorry I'm not more specific, but I'm looking like sometime in the first half of 2026. But I will try and get you a better date. But a lot of that just depends on our community meetings. So I do apologize that I don't have a better answer for you. And then finally, at a previous board meeting, you had asked us some questions regarding the Maile Fire and fire hydrants. Thank you Chair for sending me those exhaustive questions. We've actually met internally twice on this issue already. We are tentatively scheduled to come to your September meeting if that still works for you. I will not only be here, but my boss, Mr. Ernest La, will be attending. He's the manager and chief engineer for the Board of Water Supply, along with the rest of our team will be coming. And I do believe Battalion Chief Ken Ito, who I think both of you know, works out of the, I understand, Nanakuli Fire Station, will be attending as well. And we hope not only to address your questions, but to provide a solution, which is why we wanted to take the proper time. So we're not just coming to you saying, oh, this is what happened. We can say, this is what happened and this is what we're looking to do. We can say, "This is what happened, and this is what we're looking to do." I heard your questions earlier tonight. And, I did have, if I may, if there's just a few more minutes, board member Dela Cruz. You'd asked this, I believe you were referring to the Ho'iai, the PFAS found in the Ho'iai wells. We did do a briefing at YNI, I apologize that that was not offered to this board. But very quickly, whenever something new is found in the water, the well that has not been found before, required by state law to report that to the Department of Health, which is what we did. The good news is, is that well already has a filtering system on it because of old agrochemicals from pineapple and sugar. So we already use granulated activated carbon to filter the water before it goes into the system. So what we've been doing is we're trying to locate what we think might be the source, but that may not be possible, because PFAS is in a lot of products, it's all over the place. And it could have been from any specific, we may never find out where it came from. But the good news is, because we have this system in place and the kind of PFAS we found, it's removed well by granulated activated carbon. We're gonna tweak that system to ensure that it doesn't come out. And we have been testing it regularly, I believe weekly, until we're assured that it's not, we're pulling everything out of there. So we are working on it. We're testing weekly to ensure, and then what we do is go back and make sure that we adjust how often we change out the granulated carbon. It can be any, some places we only change it like nine months, someplace six months. So we may have to go from a nine-month to a six-month to ensure that it gets filtered out before we put it into the distribution system. So thank you.
Thank you, okay. Please forward your questions to me by email, and I will forward that email to Kathleen Pahinui. Thank you so much for your update, appreciate it. We're gonna move forward in the agenda to close out before the 10 o'clock time. So Board Business, I will table A and B, and move forward to C, Item C on Board Business. Transportation Committee and Housing and Zoning Committee will be appointing community members. Present this evening, Richard Lanford and Gary Shinzato. I would open the floor for a motion, and we can take a vote.
Chairs, I move that we ratify the membership of Richard Lanford and Gary Shinzato to be members, official voting members of the Transportation Committee and the Housing and Zoning Committee.
Motion made by Myers, seconded by Ayo. We're gonna take a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Community member Richard Lanford, who is present this evening, and Gary Shinzato for volunteering your time to assist with our Transportation and Housing and Zoning Committees. I will be tabling D and E items on our agenda, and moving forward to Item F. The Special Joint Meeting with the YNI Coast Neighborhood Board, Callamai for the Taipo. This will be held on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. A location to be determined once this item is voted in support with the YNI Coast Neighborhood Board. And the topic will be the Resolution on Mount Ka'ala, Kamana Nui Project, the gondola and zip lines. So, this evening, I do have Kathleen Pahinui, who has some context that she will be flipping her hat right now to share with the board.
Okay, I am no longer wearing my VWS hat, I'm here as the Chair of the North Shore Neighborhood Board. So we wanna thank you, our brothers and sisters from the other side of the mountain ridge. Some of you may have heard about this project, it's a Canadian developer. His family does help build Whistler Ski Lodge up in Canada. His thing is action adventure, so things like ski zip lines and ATVs, etc. So as you can imagine, we're very opposed to this, not just because it's inappropriate on ag land, but because of the mana of Mount Ka'ala. So we held a multi-board meeting a few weeks ago, Chair was there, thank you for joining us. And the North Shore took position, we're hopeful that the other three boards, Wahihua, Milani, Milani Moku, will also. Now, the news I did wanna quickly share with you is we found out yesterday that the developer withdrew his modification to his conditional use permit, minor, by the way, it's a minor permit. And we don't know what that means. Don Apuna from DPP thinks he's gonna resubmit it, we think so too. So what we're asking YNI Board and Nanakuli Board is that you support us opposing this action, period, just period? And asking for an environmental impact statement, which they never did, they never did anything. They came once to our neighborhood board in March of 2018, claimed they'd come back, and that was, we never heard from them again. The next thing we know, they're getting this permit approved from the previous administration. And we were just like, whoa, this is crazy, it's just, it's just wrong on so many levels, they can't even, well, you guys know. And the thing is, is if they do this in our community on a conditional use permit minor, they'll think nothing of coming over here or any other place on this island. And we just don't believe, we already have Ko'oloa, we already have other things, we don't need another zip line, we don't need ATVs, we don't need any of that. What we need is food in our stomachs and our bellies, and places for our people to live and worship and pray and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, so I open the floor for.
Chair.
Yes.
I'll open, um...
Chair, due to time.
Yes.
Okay, Chair, due to time, I so moved that the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board, in support of opposition, in honor of Kalei Selcedo, and gentrification, that we have joined in a joint meeting with YNI Coast Neighborhood Board on Tuesday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM to discuss the Resolution on Mount Ka'ala Kamana Nui Project, gondolas and zip lines.
Motion made by Myers, seconded by Manoa. I'll take a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mahalo, I am so deeply grateful. I do need to let you know, though, that is also the same night as our Neighborhood Board. So my vice chair will be here that night too, along with Makka Keston Fisher, who's the president of the Waialua Civic Hawaiian Slavic Club, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, so long as the YNI Neighborhood Board next meeting, first Tuesday in September, agrees to this joint board meeting, then we will follow up. This will be after our next Neighborhood Board meeting on September 26th. So, committee reports, our committees are scheduled to meet, please refer to the agenda. If you're interested in attending any of the committee meetings, we have a current schedule set. And agendas are on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. And if you would like to attend, we invite all community to get involved and participate and be a part of this solution. Announcements, many town halls, and the Hawaii State Public Library Genealogy Nights. August 25th is their next topic with ancestry.com. If you're interested in learning about your Mo'oku, A'auha, and ancestry, please get connected with the library's Nanakuli Public Library and attend on August 25th, 5 to 7:00 PM. Councilmember Tupola's cleanup at Mount Lahialahi on August 30th. And also Representative Keela's Town Hall with the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, as well as the Department of Transportation. Again, our next board meeting is on Tuesday, September 16th, 7:00 PM here at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually via WebEx. Board member Ayo, if you'd like to share, sorry.
Last minute, one minute of silence, please. For Officer Suzanne Oh, for her dedication and service to Maui and to all the people here in our community also. Just one minute of silence, please. Thank you, mahalo, Chair.
Mahalo, this meeting is adjourned.